The materials will be screen shared. Or you can link to the meeting agenda in the materials through the district website. But thank you to all who are joining us, and we look forward to our work session today. So first roll call of board members. Jim Bowman.
Hi.
Barry O'Connor.
Hi.
Chris Soder.
Hi.
Gary Yonkey.
Here.
And Deb Truman.
Yeah.
Claire, I got everyone correct? I think we're good. And then also joining us, Dr. Judy Baseman, superintendent. And I think I'll just turn it over to you, Judy, for introductions of your staff and to get the presentation started. There we go. Thank you, Kay. So tonight, we have several items on our agenda for this work session. And the first item on our agenda is a summary of the results of the pulse survey that we recently completed for our staff and also for our families. And this was our effort to really check in to see how our families and our staff were feeling about our response to COVID-19, the safety measures that are in place, their understanding of what we were doing to make sure that people were safe and that we had a response planned that was accessible to all and understood by all. So we have with us a guest this evening from the Studer Education Corporation. And her name is Dr. Joanne Sternke, and she has been our coach these last three years. Comes to us with lots of experience as a superintendent and as a consultant and coach across the country. And so we are very honored to have Dr. Joanne Sternke join us this evening to review our Studer Pulse Survey results for families and staff. So with that, Joanne, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Baseman. It's very nice to be with you, and I thank you for the time tonight, as well as for your commitment as board members, as well as the leaders. As Dr. Baseman said, I've had the privilege of serving for now three years working with the lead learners in the Appleton area school district. I very much enjoy that opportunity, and I'm very pleased to be with you as board members today to just share the results of this pulse survey. In the short time that I have with you, my goal is to make sure that you understand the data and have the opportunity to ask me any questions of my synthesis of the data. It's important that we just talk about the term pulse as it relates to the survey. It's a pulse survey because it's meant to take the pulse of two distinct groups. Our employees in the Appleton area school district, as well as the families that you serve. It's a short survey. It's not meant to take programmatic action, but it's really meant to give you the feeling tone at the moment regarding a highly sensitive issue, and that is the COVID-19 response and the districts work to that end. I always like to begin with why. And so as I think about this survey, I think about the importance of two-way communication and systematizing that two-way communication. And this is that attempt to make sure that we are listening or that all participants have that opportunity to weigh in and offer feedback, not just those that are the closest or those that seem to seize the opportunity the most, but that everyone has an equal voice. Secondly, we talk about the why of this, really because this is such a highly sensitive issue, and we want to know how the school district is assessing this challenging time in service to students, families, employees, and the community. And the last one really just has to do with breadth and the sense that we will use the feedback to guide the safe and resilient return. It's not the only piece of information that we will use in terms of taking a look at what the next steps are, but that we will use this as a piece of that information. And I'm very pleased to say that you heard from over 5,000 families and over 1,500 employees. So that breadth is something that you can trust in terms of that. As we move forward, I thought I would start with the employee pulse survey results and just give you that overview and then ask you some questions and see what questions you might have of me. So as we look at the employee pulse survey, this survey was given less than a month ago, between November 9th and 15th, and it used a five-point Likert scale with only five questions. It was meant to be a short survey so that many people would take it, and we would just get that sense of feeling tone and pulse at the moment. As I mentioned, over 1,500 people took the survey, most of them working virtually, some working in a hybrid setting, and some coming in, I would assume mostly to the Skull and Center, but also elsewhere, and working face-to-face. So we had good participation. The five questions are here on this page, along with the mean, and again, a five being the highest, strongly agree, to a low of one, meaning strongly disagree. Top box refers to the percent of participants that scored at a five, as in strongly agree. So just to be clear, in the first question, on a five-point scale, 3.36 is the average of the 1,521 responses related to, I feel confident that our school system is creating a safe work and learning environment. And of that group that answered that question, about a little under a fifth or 17% scored at a five, strongly agree. And so as you look at this, you can see that there is a wide variance. But also, we look at it and we see that the highest scoring question has to do with the awareness of the Appleton area school district's COVID safety protocols and mitigation strategies. It's also the highest in the top box. And the lowest question on the pulse survey has to do with what people feel the level of involvement is in overcoming those challenges. It also is the lowest top box. But I always think it's important in a survey of this nature to look at the disaggregation and the spread. And when I say that, where do the answers fall? And so this is the numeric listing of that. And what you'll see is many, many people struck scoring in the agree or strongly agree to this end. It's roughly three-quarters of your employees. So as you look at this data, I think it's important for you to see this sense of where is that encompassing response. And so a way to look at that, if I were to talk about this in just generalities, roughly half of your people agree or strongly agree that they feel confident, and these are employees, that the school system is creating a safe work and learning environment. And I should point out to you that even if it weren't COVID-related, that usually centers at around the 70th percentile. So there is a high degree of confidence that people have with the overall safety. In the next one, 55% of the people responding agree that they are aware of what the district is doing, and little under 20% or a fifth disagreeing with that. In terms of being involved in making and creating input to overcome the challenges, roughly a third of the people strongly agree, and just over a third disagree. So that one is the most polarized in terms of that. And in truth, and again, I'm just offering you my own opinion on that. I think it's a difficult answer in terms of how much input can we take in, in terms of that allowing people to give opinions and then being able to act on those opinions. But the idea of this one is, is that now if we were to do this survey again, people have had the opportunity for input, and I think you would see that go up. And here again, I'm particularly struck that three-quarters of people agree or strongly agree that they are aware of and understand the COVID safety protocol. We also allowed people to give comments, and I synthesized those into six big areas. And I just want to summarize them. I wish I could say that, and I would think for you board members that have been working through this, I don't think there was many items that I would say, what a revelation in these comments. But I do believe that they are very validating in many different ways. When we think of our comments from employees, true appreciation that the district is doing its best and that these are indeed challenging times. Many also, I would say, gave a shout out to their colleagues, as well as commented on how hard they are working to serve students in new ways and unprecedented new ways. So a feeling that people are working hard in a difficult situation. Number two, while people have great awareness of the safety protocol, they want to make sure that everyone is following it, and that is enforced and consistent in all settings. Every now and then, you would read a story of a feeling where some of it is not as strongly enforced as it could be, and a desire that if and when people come back full-time, that this protocol is greatly adhered to and that there is safety around that. Number three, especially from employees, a strong desire to keep people safe. And I believe that that has a lot to do then with number five. As we start to come back in the virtual plus setting, a desire just to make sure that the campus and all the schools are safe, and really a strong desire for personal safety, as well as the safety of everyone else as students. Number four, because I think three and five are parlayed together. Number four, there is great appreciation for the flexibility the district has shown employees about when and where to work. And then lastly, a desire for consistent communication, particularly clear communication as it exists around return to in-person instruction and just about the changes. And as we make those changes to virtual plus from virtual and then working toward in-person instruction. So I would say these are the major themes that we saw. And I must tell you that these themes parlay very well with what we've seen in this pulse survey across the nation in terms of employees really wanting a great concern to be informed, as well as feeling they are working hard and want the conditions to be very, very safe. Before I move on, I'm wondering if you would like to converse with me, board members, about anything in the survey that you found validating, surprising, or just things that you noticed? But also, things that you might wonder about and things that you possibly have, something that makes you feel proud or, on the other hand, concerned. And so at this point, I'm going to stop sharing my screen and just ask you, in the data regarding employees, is there anything that you noticed or wonder about that you would like to comment on, board members? Or if you have any questions about the employee survey that you would like me to respond to at this point in time? Thank you, Board Member O'Connor.
Hi, Joanne. Thank you for your presentation thus far. I have a couple of questions. How many, how many comments, how many people actually commented? Is this a big, just a few, or was it a kind of a representative group of the faculty?
I believe you could say it was representative. I believe there were over 1,000 comment fields.
Okay, great. And then the other question is, in terms of the differences between, what's the difference between a hybrid employee and one working face-to-face?
Face-to-face is 100% of the time in the office versus those that have some flexibility, come in some days, but don't other days, or work a partial schedule.
Okay. And then is there any breakdown by, like, whether support staff, para-pro responses differ from that? Because they tend to be in the classroom connection, I think. And I'm just kind of curious what their feeling is about safety in that setting.
Thank you for asking. That's a good, that's a good question. We did not break the survey down that way. We did break it down by school location, but we did not disaggregate it for this purpose by school. We did give the schools each piece of information regarding their school, as well as the district means, so that they could learn from that, but not the desire to share it at that level.
Okay, so some of the responses of the faculty, many of them are people that are working from home. So when they say they feel safe, they are saying that they're safe at home. They aren't necessarily commenting on mitigation or so on.
Right. I would say that you would, I think the way that question was worded had to do with that they're creating a safe work and learning environment. And given when the survey was taken, that would be with that ability to be in the virtual setting.
Okay, thanks.
Sure. Other questions?
Jim Bowman, I, some of the, some of the people responded, I'm not very involved in providing input. And I just think on safety, that's, that's fine. I mean, standards for how you keep people safe should come from experts, from our best scientific research and medical community. So that generally should be determined by somebody else, and then, and then, I think, determined or then directed to our people. Now, our people might be involved in the how with some of those, but I don't think they're deeply involved in designing the safety system.
I couldn't agree more, Board Member Bowen. I really agree that the idea of this, and many people may have looked at that question that way. Am I involved in the decision about virtual plus, virtual or in-person instruction? The way the question is worded is overcoming the challenges. So you could interpret it as, I'm involved in providing input about how to teach better in a virtual setting, but it's a matter of how people viewed the question. I also agree with you that this is one piece of information. And in times of crisis, oftentimes, there isn't as much being asked for collaborative input as much as it is centered around the science of the moment. Any other questions?
Looks like Gary has his hand up.
Thank you.
I thank you. Thanks for your presentation and comments thus far. So my, I wondered about the use of the word challenges in that same question, two and three, where we talked about getting the input. And I wondered if that led to some ambiguity maybe, and why some of the, you know, strongly disagree, that they weren't quite clear maybe on what exactly we were referring to in that sense. And I don't know if that was intentional to be, you know, less specific versus specific.
Actually, it was an intentional word choice so that we opened it up so that people could view it in, in a way that they could think about input in a broader lens than just around the decision of in-person, not in-person instruction. But I would also tell you that at the end, and I look at some of my friends here that are assistant superintendents, and they're meeting with each of the lead learners in each of the school sites to really get their opinions and talk about this and look at the input at the school level and the district level, hoping to really get some more nuance around that, those questions. So I always think that the best survey is the start of focused discussion, and that's certainly the way the Appleton area school district is viewing this, which is a good thing.
Okay, all right. Thanks.
Deb, you'd had your hand up, or you still have a question?
Okay, I'm going to move forward.
I'm sorry, Joanne, I'm sorry. Chris Soder now just raised her hand.
Thank you.
I guess I'd like to just ask another question about the safety piece. And if you could just share, were the majority of the comments around that piece about having input or feeling safe? Or can you, can you share, or was it all over the board?
I would say, in answer to your question, the majority of the comments from employees were appreciative of the virtual decision because they felt that they were in a safe environment and could offer teaching and learning in that environment. And so I think the abundance of questions, abundance of the comments were in that realm. And I think as it related to the safety mitigation and protocols, it was, there were some people that cited instances of mask-wearing not being as consistent in some locations and the like. So there were some comments, but I would say the far abundance, if I were to put it into, 90% of the comments were about really being appreciative of really taking a stance on safety. And then some were saying if they were working in a hybrid situation, that there were instances where the protocol wasn't being enforced to the degree that they would like it, and they cited some examples.
And then in those cases, those are shared at the site level so that individuals could possibly work on having that.
Yes, that is the follow-up plan.
All right. Thank you, and thank you for sharing this information.
Thank you.
Barry, is your hand back up?
A question that triggered by Chris's question is, do we have any feedback administrators and so on about how the general feeling among the staff is regarding the proposals for January 19th and so on? And I know this survey didn't address it directly, but, you know, we get, we get quite a few letters, and some of them state a point of view, but it really doesn't give us a sense of the overall feel. Does anyone feel comfortable that we have a feel for that? Or is it, is it kind of unknown at this point?
So specifically related to the current AM, PM interim hybrid proposal, that information from a survey will be shared by NAN in the upcoming portion of the presentation. But it was specific to the AM, PM interim hybrid.
Okay, that's good. Thank you. I appreciate that.
And now I'll take, in a very similar fashion, just give you some information regarding the family pulse survey results. Similarly, this question, this survey had over 5,000 participants. It used the same five-point Likert scale from a strongly disagree to disagree to not sure, to agree, to strongly agree. Same window. This survey, however, had seven questions. And these questions really focused greatly on people's, and again, knowing that it's parents, family members that took this survey. And again, just reviewing the questions, the idea of confidence in how the school is handling this in terms of keeping children safe. Number two, confidence that they're focused on the social, emotional well-being of children. Three, resources. Four, access to children's teachers. Five, feedback from those teachers. Number six, confidence that my child will not fall behind in school. And seven, timely communication on changes. And so as we look at this, I just think, again, just calling out a couple of things. This is a real point of pride. I've now given this survey just personally in nine different school districts. And this is, being over a four is great. And in a district as large as Appleton, I just think that's a real point of pride that people are feeling that their teachers are there when they need them. There's strong agreement. Over a third of people felt that in the strongly agree. And so nice to see that. And I think that that's a real opportunity to salute your teaching staff and your support staff and say thank you for being there for families. I've given this survey, as I said multiple times, and this clearly is one of the lowest indicators every time. And this is not surprising to me. Parents are concerned, and you've heard it. I've heard it across our country, concerned around their children falling behind. It also has the strongest, or I should say, the least in top box as well. And so when we look at the scope of those questions, I think, again, here are all the numbers related to that, and you see that very clearly. Many people falling into question six in that side of strongly disagreeing that they don't have confidence in that. Conversely, strong, strong agreement around access. When we look at that in terms that it's a little bit easier to get our arms around if we look at the strongly agree and agree together, I just think there's some real great things to share here. So for example, looking at this first one, 63, almost two-thirds of your people agree that they are confident that my child's school is handling the COVID-19 challenge to keep my child safe. And again, I just want to say that 15% disagree, but close to two-thirds would say that they're agreeing that the child, you know, that the school district is handling this challenge to keep my child safe. Roughly half of the participants agree or strongly agree that there's a great focus on social and emotional well-being, with a little over a quarter disagreeing. When we go down here, about over half the families feeling they have the resources. And I think this is one of the follow-up questions that principals will be asked. What are you hearing from families? What other resources do they need? But this one, I think, is just, again, over three-quarters of the people that responded to this survey indicated that they have access to the children's teacher with only 8% a single-digit disagreeing to that. So again, one of the things I see when I look at this quantitative data is teachers and support staff working very, very diligently to really be there for families and students in this virtual teaching world. And again, looking at these questions, again, with the agree and strongly agree together, close to two-thirds, almost two-thirds exactly, agree with the statement that they receive feedback. And I have to tell you that that doesn't get a lot higher, even in a non-virtual setting. That's a, that's a good number for that question. When we do, what I mean by is when we ask that question about receiving feedback in a normal circumstance, we're lucky to get in the 70th percentile on that question. But again, when we look at this idea of confidence that students are not falling behind, a third of the families agree that they are confident. A third of families agree that they're confident that their child is not falling behind, but slightly more than that, at 42% disagree or strongly disagree. But again, I wanted to give that context because when we look at that together, again, a third of the families, 1,500 people responding, a third of, a third of them feel confident that their child is not falling behind. But again, with this timely communication, again, almost three-quarters agreeing that they're receiving good communication. And again, I would say, even in non-COVID settings, that's around what that is in many, many survey settings regarding communication from the school. So I'm just going to quickly review the themes regarding this that came from families. I would say, and I don't think this would surprise you, incredibly mixed feelings about return to school. In strong numbers, expressing support for virtual instruction, wanting their children to be safe. And then I would say, close to equally strong numbers, wanting their children back in school, that in-person instruction is preferred. Views were strongly worded, and they were strong on both ends of that continuum. Number two, amidst strong feelings, still such heartfelt expressions of gratitude, particularly to specific teachers at the school level of going the extra mile, working hard to serve students. I was struck often, when I've looked at all of these comments in the many districts that I work in, often you hear specific comments regarding teacher X or teacher Y, and they're not being responsive. There was very little of that in this survey. In fact, I would agree that many, if not most, of the respondents really shouted out great exemplars of terrific service that was occurring in the name of their child's learning. Very mixed feelings regarding the effectiveness of virtual learning. Some surprised and impressed with how it is working. Many others not feeling their child is as engaged and that that is occurring more frequently as it is lasting longer, I would say. Number four, sometimes you heard heartfelt stories from families leaving comments about just how hard it is right now. And I'm sure you've received commentary about this as well. That sense that it's difficult to help students from a parental standpoint, and people saying that this is very difficult to be a parent and also working to help educate your child in a virtual setting. Number five, really the importance of strong teacher communication regarding assignments, regarding next steps, and just some shout-outs regarding the clarity of this. And also a few times when people just wanted more information about how their child is doing, really supported with, I think, great numbers, the same comment breakdown that was in the numerics. And a few, I would say more than a few. Number six, a desire that, that these options continue into the future, that we don't just view it as going, quote, "back to normal", but how can we really create an environment where many options might be met in the name of student learning? So that if some parents wanted this option, that could be available, and other parents wanting option X, that might be available. So if I would say, the biggest thing that I would comment on the themes is, they were strong. There were many of them. There were hundreds of pages. And they really fit into a profile. If you'd asked me to say more of one than the other, not really. They were very much, as I tried to encapsulate in question number one, mixed feelings about the return to school and more virtual, more in-person instruction. Concern for safety, but also a desire to get students back. With that, I would ask you the same questions, and then I would take any questions from you. Whoops, sorry. What do you notice? What did you wonder about? And any questions that I might be able to answer regarding the 5,100 and some responses from your Appleton area school district families?
Looks like Gary has a hand up.
Yeah, the question. So what percentage of families responded to this survey?
Well, it would be, I would say, if I'm doing straight numerics, knowing your enrollment, it's around forty percent of families. Am I right in that about Dr. Baseman?
Okay, so less than half.
Families.
Okay. Is that something, is that a good percentage to read into?
That's not only statistically sound, I believe on most family engagement surveys. I'd have to look back at the, at, in Appleton area school district, but normally they hover at around thirty to thirty five percent tops. So you've got a statistically sound group. Mr. Bowman?
They, I, I know that forty percent normally would be quite high, but based on the the controversy surrounding virtual learning and, and hybrid learning and, and in person in this virus, I would have expected it to be higher. So I'm interested, do you have any sense of the sixty percent that didn't respond? Sometimes I think that, that they don't have strong feelings either way. And so they decide it's not worth filling out this survey. I just don't, I think things, the district's doing what they ought to be doing. I, I, I don't think my kid's learning as much as she did in school, but I'm nervous about her, her safety. So it, it, would that be a reasonable assumption to make that the people that did not respond just don't feel strongly about this issue?
I don't, not talking to anyone, nor have we reached out to those people that did not fill out the survey. We wouldn't know. So I don't have anything statistical to say regarding that. However, I would tell you that in broad terms, I would agree. I think people, especially in the comments on this, it's very clear people had strong views. So I would be left to think that if you had a strong view, you were more likely to fill out a short survey. We certainly, as we messaged the survey, talked about that it would take five minutes, seven questions, so that I believe that it wasn't that people viewed it as onerous. So I, I think you could extrapolate that. I don't know if I would say that that is statistically the right thing to say, but I would tell you that just in reading the comments and looking at the survey, people with stronger, strong views did respond to the survey.
Chris?
My question is just more general in nature. You had mentioned that you've received similar data in other school districts. And I'm wondering if there were other school districts that had more in person learning or to start this year, that if you've noticed any difference, particularly in the question about worrying about my child being behind or lagging behind.
That's a very good question. I will tell you that it has been the lowest responding scoring question in any environment, whether they were virtual, whether they were hybrid, meaning there some days, not the other. And I don't believe that I have been working with anyone that is back one hundred percent. So I don't have any from there. It's been the lowest scoring question in both situations that I can say.
Thank you.
I'll, I'll just add, Joanne, I appreciate this data very much. This gives me a sense of where our current population stands. And that's important to me. So I appreciate this.
Yeah, I think the biggest thing it gives you is breath. You know, I think you've been hearing voices, but this is five thousand, five thousand family voices. So I think you're able to hearing just from a larger population.
I'm sorry, we, a couple more questions from board members. Looks like Deb has, has had her hand up.
Yes. This, I was going to ask this a little bit before, but with regards to the parent responses about having high ratings for communication with teachers. Was there a sense of that happening more at certain levels of schools than others? For example, did elementary parents tend, was it broken down by school levels, I guess, is what I'm asking.
I need to be honest with you, and I didn't take a look at that question by school level, but I will go back and do that. And I'll get Dr. Baseman a, a view of that. I didn't look at it that way from different levels. So I will do that and get back to her.
Okay, because I think, you know, as schools, I mean, as this data is given back to schools for them to study, that would be important to know.
Yes.
If it's something that they're, they're doing well on, or if it's something they need to do a little bit more work on.
Okay. And just to be clear, the schools will look at their extrapolated numeric data along with the district means. So they'll know where they're doing better than the mean. But I will look at it overall by level, elementary, middle and high school and, and give a little bit more synthesis that way. That's a great question, Deb.
Well, thank you.
And Barry.
I, just a couple of things. I, I do appreciate the feedback and our staff's performance. I think that is very. I mean, I'm just very impressed by it and appreciative of our staff for what they've done. The, the other, the only other tech question I have is can a, when a family fills this out, can both parents fill it out? Or is it just one per family?
They would have the option to do both.
Okay, so we haven't really got a real sense of how many students this represents in our, or how many parents, how many family units, I guess.
No.
And overall, how many family units do we have in the district? Probably about ten thousand or less. Eight or nine, does someone know other than?
I believe it's about ten thousand.
Yeah, I think that number was I had for some reason. Okay, thanks.
So the last thing, and then I know you've got a busy agenda. I just wanted to share because one of the reasons I enjoy working with Dr. Baseman so much is there's always that sense of what's actionable, what's next? And so this was how we launched this. And so once the survey was complete and Dr. Baseman and the team received the information, information was shared with employees and families, letting them know more about that. And as we looked at that, then the lead learners looked at the results on December third. And then the results were sent to families as well as to employees. The work session is today. And then this is what I really like is during the month of December, associate principals are rounding with the assistant. I put rounding with the assistant superintendents and really making sure that this is being looked at from the level of so what, what do you need to do differently at the building level based on what you know? And what do advice do you have for us district wide? And so there's a strong sense of using this as follow up communication that I think is really important. So thanks to James and Nan and, and, excuse me, I'm going to sneeze for getting that information out and, and showing that as well. So just really want to say thank you to the follow up being done as I look Ben, Holly. As I said, Nan, all of you for really going back to principals and looking at this from a school lens and really making sure that we can move forward productively. Thank you for your time today. If you have any other questions, I'm here. And I will get back to you, Dr. Baseman, with the question regarding looking at elementary, middle and high school regarding the, the communication.
Great. Thank you very much, Joanne.
Happy to be with you.
Okay. Thank you. Next on the agenda is our presentation regarding the elementary hybrid options that are going to be shared with us. I'd like to start by thanking our elementary virtual plus work group under the leadership of Dr. Nan Bono for all of their efforts to design and implement each phase of our virtual plus model for grades EC, early childhood through grade six. Their tireless efforts have remained focused on the primary goal of providing additional in person instructional opportunities to meet the essential academic, social, emotional and physical needs of all elementary students, while also prioritizing the health and safety of our students and our staff. Each model option that you will hear about during this presentation shares its own unique benefits and limitations that must be carefully considered. Because two of the options were not part of the original safe and resilient return framework that you approved on August twelfth. We're providing a comprehensive review of the options to support your consideration and decision regarding these options. Tonight, in addition to Nan and Steve, who will be sharing this presentation, I'd like to welcome two elementary principals who are members of the virtual plus work group, who will be assisting Nan and Steve this evening. Andrea Vingy is with us. She is the principal of McKinley Elementary School. Welcome Andrea. And Dr. Carrie Willer, who is the principal of Franklin Elementary School. Welcome to you both and thank you. With that, I will turn it over. If we could have Clara pull up the presentation. So tonight, our agenda will be first of all, to give you a background and an overview of where we've been and where we're headed. You will also receive in depth information about the AM PM hybrid interim model, which is we're referring to as option one. Then the AABB hybrid interim, interim model, which is option two. And then in person return from the original safe and resilient return framework. As we go through the presentation, you'll have a chance to process and take some notes. So we would ask that you would make use of this particular document to take any notes that you might wish to take throughout the presentation. There'll be a lot of information shared with you. So anything that you notice particularly about option one, option two, and then the original hybrid that was part of the safe and resilient return that you approved on August twelfth. So that's a tool for you that we hope that you'll use as we go through. And then there'll be a time at the end where we will process that information together. So as we think about where we are this evening, we would like to focus on the decisions that you'll be asked to make later this evening. First question is, should we add an interim hybrid phase to the approved safe and resilient return framework prior to moving to the original elementary hybrid model? If yes, which option do you feel is best for our students, the AM PM interim hybrid or the AABB interim hybrid? And then just a reminder that the original elementary hybrid model had fully in person learning for grades five K through four and AABB hybrid for grades five and six. So that is our purpose this evening, so that you have information you need to answer those questions later on this evening. So just as a reminder, the way that we had hoped to start this particular school year was to have that enhanced, fully virtual opportunity available to everyone at all levels, while bringing back our students in the hybrid model, which is the fully in person that we just talked about for early childhood, four K kindergarten and grades one through four. And then that hybrid model with the AABB for grades five through grade twelve. So the question tonight is, as shown on the screen here, do we want to add an interim step as an AM PM or AABB model? And that is where it would fall somewhere between where we are now, which is fully virtual and we have the plus assisting our students, targeted students. But this would be an interim step for our youngest learners.
Thank you, Dr. Baseman. I would like to start by just talking a little bit about our EC six work group. A nine member safe and resilient return work group, which included eight elementary principals and myself, began meeting in July to review the recommendations of the multiple district work groups that provided to each of our levels to create an elementary specific guidance document. The work group then expanded in October and November to include the members shown on this slide to plan for the safe and resilient return to in person instruction at the elementary level. This included the fully virtual plus as well as the return to in person instruction for all EC six students. Initial focus for a safe and resilient return to in person learning included our most vulnerable populations. We began in September with students with disabilities who are identified through the IEP process in need of in person instruction, as well as the YMCA, the Boys and Girls Club Classroom Connections Program. EL newcomers, the first phase of fully virtual plus at the elementary level began at the end of November, excuse me, at the end of October at McKinley. And the second phase of fully virtual plus at the elementary level launched at the end of November and focused on our level one and two English learners, our tier three literacy interventions and student support groups. The work group considered an interim hybrid option for grades K four for three reasons. First, an interim hybrid option would continue the layering concept that we have found success with to date, providing additional opportunities for students to receive essential in person services at their school sites, but doing so in smaller groups to teach and practice mitigation strategies and school routines, which we know is a core component to a safe reentry of our youngest learners. Steve, I believe the is the PowerPoint still showing?
It is.
Okay, must be just on my screen. Again, I'll repeat that. With this interim hybrid option, we would continue the layering concept we have found success with to date, providing additional opportunities for students to receive essential in person service at their school sites, but doing so in a smaller group to teach and practice mitigation strategies and school routines, which we know is a core component to a safe reentry for our youngest learners. With an interim plan, students in grades five K through four would be instructed in groups of ten or less. And students in grades five and six would be instructed in groups of fifteen or less. Second, with an interim hybrid option, it would allow lower class size to provide better mitigation. With a hybrid option, we would reduce building capacity, be able to teach and reteach mitigation strategies in smaller groups of students to fidelity more quickly. Build student, family and staff confidence in our mitigation strategies. And with the AM PM option, have the ability to build the stamina of our youngest learners to a full day of instruction. Finally, an interim hybrid option would allow lower class size to target essential academic and social emotional needs of our youngest learners. Teachers will have improved ability to address unfinished learning and the social emotional needs of students. They also will have an improved ability to accelerate learning, to increase student achievement and close achievement gaps due to our extended time in virtual learning. When class size is lowered, student achievement will increase. And achievement gaps will close because the teacher will be able to develop improved knowledge of students, spend more time focused on instruction due to fewer discipline issues in the classroom, individualize instruction and increase the use of student centered learning approaches that, that promote engagement.
Thank you, Nan. And this is Steve Harrison, and I'm going to provide the group with an overview of each of the two interim plans as well as a lead in into what you'll hear from other members of our group as they share with us an overview of really a comparison of these plans in terms of safety, instruction, as well as what are the potential implications for our families? And so to assist with the additional details that will be part of this presentation, looking to give you an overall visual of what each of the two interim options entail and how that relates overall to, again, those major areas. And so with respect to option one, within the item for consideration that you will see within the full board meeting, this is the AM PM cohort interim model, again, designed to be that potential interim phase between fully virtual and in person instruction. This is the point of view of what things would look like from the viewpoint of someone in a cohort A or AM cohort. And so a couple of things to point out for you. The first is that you'll notice that there are different number, potential different number, potential numbers of students depending upon grade bands. So a cohort for grades 5K through 4 would be potentially around 10 students per class, whereas a cohort of either AM or PM for grades 5 and 6 would be approximately 15 students per class. And again, this reflects the staffing that was done earlier this year to ensure we had smaller class sizes, particularly at the earlier grade levels. So a couple of things to point out. Again, from the perspective of an AM cohort student, that would mean in-person instruction in the morning on Mondays, Tuesdays, Thursdays, and Fridays, with afternoon entailing online access to instruction through Canvas. And so in-person learning would focus primarily on mathematics, English language arts, and social-emotional learning, with an additional support taking place in the afternoon in areas of physical education, as well as fine arts. In addition, there would also be resources online for iReady support in mathematics, as well as in reading. So it overall represents a full day of learning with just the morning being in-person, lunch and transportation taking place in between, with then afternoon learning taking place through Canvas. Now you'll notice that on Wednesdays in this current interim template, that Wednesdays would be all-day online access to instruction through Canvas, while also providing both individual and small group supports for students. So again, this is the perspective if a student was coming into this model within Cohort A or AM. And the mirror image of that is what it would look like for those that are in Cohort B or PM. So again, same number of students reflected by grade bands, just that you would notice that students would be starting their day by accessing instruction online, again, within those same areas. Within the specials are fine arts, music, RPE, additional support of iReady, whereas after lunch and then transportation to school would result in in-person learning for mathematics, reading, and social-emotional learning. This model would involve a teacher having a daily meeting with students in person. So if a teacher having students in the morning in Cohort A would start their day with a daily meeting with students in person, and then do the same thing with students in the afternoon as they are in person. So again, this is the illustration that represents Option 1, the interim model of AM PM. And again, you'll also see additional details within this presentation regarding that what that comparison means for safety instruction and implications for families. Now with respect to Option 2, which is the interim plan that looks as a AABB hybrid, you'll notice some similarities between this illustration and what I just showed you, but I do want to point out some key differences. As far as similarities, again, you are noticing the same approximate number of students in cohorts, whether that's AM PM or AABB, in the same grade band groupings you saw before. And you'll also notice that there's an opposite viewpoint of whether that's Cohort A or Cohort B. A key difference to reflect within this slide is that you are seeing a full day worth of learning for both cohorts at the same time. So within this framework, you would really want to look at it in terms of the whole day of Monday, where those in Cohort A spend the entire day in school, whereas those in Cohort B spend the entire day accessing their learning online through Canvas. Same thing would hold true for Tuesday, so two consecutive days of learning within the same format, with then Wednesday again being the same as what we currently have in our fully virtual model, and also what you see within the AM PM interim model of Wednesdays being online access to learning through Canvas, as well as individual, small group support. Thursday then would be a mirror image of what you see from Monday, Tuesday, where Thursday now, our Cohort A, is accessing learning all day online through Canvas, whereas Cohort B is spending the entire day in person. So both models, excuse me, both cohorts have two consecutive days of in-person instruction and three consecutive days of online access to instruction. One point I just wanted to quickly go back to is that within Cohort AM PM model, we did as a group also look at other districts, particularly in Dane County, that have been using a half-day model, and found that there were seven districts within Dane County, including Verona, Wanakee, Oregon, DeForest, McFarland, Wisconsin Heights, and Belleville, that have all been using this model. And so part of the work of the larger group of the Safe and Resilient Return was also looking to see what other districts have been using an AM PM model, and found those seven in particular from Dane County. So finally, as we look at, really beyond Option 1 and Option 2, which again represent interim models, this would be the original hybrid as proposed previously in August as part of the Safe and Resilient Return Framework. And so here you are seeing really three different things. You are seeing ages 5K through grade 4 being fully in-person five days a week, as represented by the illustration. And again, a key difference is Wednesday would be included as that full day of in-person learning, whereas grades 5 and 6 would have the AABB cohort model that I just shared with you visually on the previous slide, where approximately 15 students from one classroom would be in Cohort A of two days in person with three days virtual, and then Cohort B, starting the week of three consecutive days online and finishing the week with two days fully in person. So again, these last few slides have just meant to be a visual for you to hopefully better conceptualize the two different interim models that have been proposed, the AM PM and AABB, as well as a reminder of what the original framework included for grades 5K through 4 being fully in-person, Monday through Friday, and grades 5 and 6 Cohort AABB model. And so with that, I will turn things over to Andrea Vingi, principal of McKinley Elementary, who will walk us through the details here of the interim plan for AABB and AM PM comparisons.
Thank you, Steve. I am going to walk us through those two comparisons, and we are going to look at three main points of consideration: safety, instruction, and implications for families. In reviewing the potential models, the workgroup considered multiple points about each model, including the ability to adhere to safety and mitigation strategies, impact on building capacity, academic and social-emotional benefits, including the frequency of in-person and synchronous opportunities between the teacher and student, implications for families, including having different children or having children at different grade levels, childcare, transportation, and required support when in virtual instruction, ability to staff the model, teacher workload required to implement the model, and finally, the scheduling impact, including recesses, meals, specials classes such as art, music, and physical education. The first point of comparison between the AABB hybrid and AM PM hybrid, I will address is safety. Due to how the in-person instruction is scheduled, full day versus half-day, the AABB hybrid increases the likelihood of close contact among students outside the classroom due to participation in recess and picking up meals. Additionally, students will remove their masks in the classroom during breakfast and lunch. Conversely, the AM PM hybrid limits close contacts outside of the classroom due to not holding recess or meals on-site and allows students to remain masked at all times as meals will be to go. Also, the AM PM model provides the opportunity for our youngest learners to build student stamina and mitigation strategies and routines, such as 100% mask wearing. When comparing the two interim hybrid models and safety, we vetted both options through our local health advisors. The AM PM hybrid model was preferred due to the safety considerations mentioned. The second point of comparison between the AABB hybrid and the AM PM hybrid, I will address is instruction. When comparing the number of daily in-person teacher contacts, students would have contact with their teacher in the AABB hybrid two times per week. In the AM PM hybrid model, students would have contact with their teacher four times per week. With the AABB hybrid model, the students at school and at home would be learning the same content at the same time. The students at home would receive asynchronous instruction three days per week through recorded lessons. They would complete their schoolwork independently through Canvas. Due to this structure, the ability of the teacher to be responsive to the needs of students learning virtually is limited. In addition, considering the number of subject areas taught by the same teacher at the elementary level, there would be an increased workload for the teacher due to needing to plan for delivery of the same content, both in-person and virtually through Canvas. With the AMPed hybrid model, students would learn the same content on the same day when in-person, carrying over the independent work usually done in the classroom into the virtual half of their day. There would be a reduced reliance on recorded lessons and Canvas for instructional implementation. Also, with more frequent contacts across the week, a teacher's ability to provide students with feedback, as well as to be responsive to student and family needs increases. Lastly, a point of consideration between both models was paraprofessional time. In the AABB model, paraprofessional time would be focused on recess and lunch supervision, as we would need to schedule additional recess and lunch times to ensure adequate physical distancing among student groups. In the EMPM model, paraprofessional time would be focused on instructional support, which would be a critical support in the classroom for teachers as we work to address unfinished learning and the social-emotional needs of our students. The final point of comparison between the AABB hybrid and the AM PM hybrid, I will address is implications for families. With the AABB hybrid model being full day, there would be two days per week where transportation would be required. With the AM PM hybrid, there would be four days per week where transportation would be required. The transportation times would be dependent on the AM or PM session assignment. When assigning students to an AABB or AM PM cohort, in the AABB hybrid model, the 5K through 6 students can be assigned to the same cohort as their middle and high school siblings, who may be a source of childcare during the day. In the AM PM hybrid model, 5K, 6 students can be assigned to the same half-day session as their early childhood, including 4K siblings, which may be easier for transportation. Parents and caregivers have shared concerns over the amount of asynchronous time in our current fully virtual model due to the need for them to provide supervision and support of the student, especially if there are multiple students in the home to support, or if the parent is working remotely from home. With the AABB model, the student would be in almost fully asynchronous instruction with recorded lessons and work in Canvas for three out of the five days, as the classroom teacher is instructing half of the class fully in person four out of the five days. This amount of asynchronous instruction is not a developmental match to the elementary student and would greatly increase the supervision and instructional support required by the caregiver or parent. With the AM PM model, students are able to have more frequent in-person contact with their teacher across the week, as well as carry over the independent work usually done in the classroom into that virtual half-day, instead of needing to be on a screen in asynchronous instruction. Finally, we know childcare and transportation is a challenge for working families. We have been able to capitalize on our partnership with the YMCA and Boys and Girls Club to provide school-age care options, including before school, during the virtual portion of their school day, and after school. Through the Learning Link program, the YMCA will provide families with the option to schedule before and/or after school at the 13 sites they serve. They anticipate being able to offer over 1,000 seats across the 13 sites for before and after-school care. In addition, the YMCA will offer 300 sites to school-age care at the Appleton YMCA before school, during the virtual portion of the school day, and after school for either hybrid model. They are capping the number of seats to 300 to be able to provide care to all participants, AABB or AM PM on Wednesdays. In the AM PM hybrid model, the district will provide families the free bus shuttle service between the Appleton YMCA and school sites during the midday transition. The Boys and Girls Club has four club locations at our elementary site. Through the Learning Link program, they will provide families with the option to schedule before-school and/or after-school care at Highlands Elementary, since it is a 21st century community learning center. The club will add before and after-school care at Columbus ABS, Badger, and Foster, when staffing allows. In addition, the Boys and Girls Club will offer 200 seats for school-age care at the Appleton Club before school, during the virtual portion of the school day, and after school for either hybrid model. To maximize the number of seats available, each family will be provided with care two of the four Wednesdays per month. In the AM PM hybrid model, the district will provide families with free bus shuttle service between the Appleton Boys and Girls Club and school sites during the midday transition. Through before-school and after-school and school daycare options, both organizations anticipate that they will be able to meet the school-age care needs of the current Classroom Connection families and hope to assist additional families in need of this service. In all service models, the effective mitigation strategies both organizations have used since March will be utilized in the Learning Link program, including grouping students in pods by school. They then will organize the school pods by grade level and/or classroom.
You're muted, Carrie.
Therefore, with the workgroup's recommendation of the AM PM interim hybrid option, 5K through 6th grade staff were asked for their feedback on a Google survey. Two questions were asked. What do you like about the model? What additional information or support will you need in place to successfully launch the model? There were 212 respondents to the survey, which is about 20% of our eligible 5K through 6th grade elementary educators and paraprofessionals. Based on the narrative responses to the survey questions, 83% of the 212 respondents indicated that they liked the AM PM interim hybrid model. 17% indicated they did not like it, but the feedback was that they did not like the specific model. Instead, these staff members had concerns about returning to any form of in-person instruction. In reviewing what respondents liked about the model, this list summarizes staff feedback with the items organized in order of times mentioned, from most to least: offering in-person instruction opportunity, starting with a soft landing; more frequent in-person contacts across the week; small class sizes; safer; students wear masks all day; no recess in meals; teachers provided prep midday and on Wednesday mornings; focus on core content: ELA, math, cell, social-emotional learning; teacher workload was considered in the plan; all elementary grade levels included in model; specials are virtual; adequate timeline provided to move to model; families still have a fully virtual option; and the model is set up for success.
So after an extensive review and discussion of the points of consideration, the Safe and Resilient Work Group recommended the AM PM interim hybrid model for Phase 3. Students would attend in-person for either the AM or PM session four days a week. And during Phase 3, Wednesdays would remain the same as a virtual day, where half of the day is asynchronous learning and half of the day is scheduled for small group or individual synchronous meetings with the teacher. We would launch Phase 3 on Tuesday, January 19th, and evaluate it after three weeks, and then weekly thereafter. Our goal is to move to Phase 4, which is the original in-person return framework of 5K through 4th grade students, fully in-person five days a week, and 5th and 6th grade remaining on a hybrid schedule due to the larger class size. We anticipate needing one week's time from the decision to moving to Phase 4 for launching it.
All right, so as a group, we shared with you on behalf of the larger EC6 Safe and Resilient Alright, so as a group, we shared with you on behalf of the larger EC6 Safe and Resilient Return Work Group, information visually as well as details relating to Option 1 as an interim model, and also Option 2 interim model, in which the first is AMPM, and the second option as an AABB. But also knowing that the in-person return framework is part of the original overall framework in which students grades 5K through 4 would be fully in person five days a week, and grades 5 and 6 would be in an AABB hybrid, in which rotation would take place four of the five days of the week. So what I'd like to do, similar to before, when we've processed collaboratively information that's been shared with you during our boardwork sessions, is to give you approximately a minute to gather your thoughts regarding Option 1 and Option 2, and also keeping in mind the original framework as presented back in August. And then what we will do is I'll just turn to each board member in about a minute and ask for the main things you noticed about Option 1, Option 2, as well as the original hybrid. So I will turn to you in a group in about one minute to get your overall thoughts.
Steve, are we supposed to be typing into the form somehow?
The form was shared if you wish to use it digitally. Otherwise, as before, if you wish to do that on your organ. Yeah.
Okay, got it.
Okay.
Steve, in addition, this is Deb, in addition to filling in this form, are we going to have time or a chance to ask questions because my notices, okay, thank you.
You bet. So part of what we will do, again, just knowing the time restraints that we have, but wanting to make sure that this is also an effective use of your time leading up to the full board meeting, is when I turn to you as a board member, we'll just ask for, you know, what are those overall key things that you're noticing about Option 1, the AMPM model? Option 2, AABB? And again, the overall key pieces of what's listed for our original return hybrid? And yes, to Deb's point, questions that you have overall for the team that presented. This would then be that opportunity to do so. We just thought, again, to maximize our time, rather than do three rounds of one per model here, that we would just look at each of the three models together at once, but per board member, so that we can make sure you're getting that opportunity to both ask questions and also to indicate the overall key areas that you notice. So with that, I will turn to Kay. I just put your initials here, similar to before, so you have an idea where we are in the working order here. And Kay, just turning to you as far as with respect to Option 1 as an interim model of AMPM. And then also for Option 2 and Option 3, what are the overall things you notice and any questions you have for the group at that time as well? I think you're on mute, Kay.
There you go. Okay. Um, darn, that was such a great statement I just made. I'm just kidding. Given that this is, we are looking at an interim step, we are anticipating we are going to transition, again, in what it's appearing from the presentation, it may be in three weeks. So one of the things that I noticed is that some of the models, I think, are going to be less disruptive as we transition, less disruptive for families every time you set a new routine and figure out, especially, I'm talking about the youngest learners and trying to figure out that childcare piece. So I think the AMPM, it would be the most difficult to transition with. And obviously, then the AABB would, I think, would be not as difficult, so that is something. And the amount of asynchronous time, you know, we also know the youngest learners, it's the asynchronous that they struggle with the most. And so that again is impacted with the models. And I just do have a question, the childcare, the numbers that I heard now, the capacity for the Y in the Boys and Girls Club was different than what I had previously heard, and so I'm not really sure where the, I'm not really sure how to reconcile that. Because this, so that's a really big question to me, because I believe that that is a tremendous barrier for for any interim that we are looking at.
Do you have questions now to be answered or at the end?
However you want to do it. We can do it at the end. I'm just citing, those were my, those were my some of the big pieces for me.
And I will make sure to then indicate in bold here items of question to make sure those are not lost in our conversation. Anything else, Kay?
I mean, I have more questions, but I think it's important that other board members can speak as well, and I will ask some other questions, or just.
Alright, thank you. Alright, turning to Deb. I think you're muted, Deb.
Sorry, that was my brilliant statement too. What I noticed on the AMPM hybrid model is that students will be receiving, well, will be in school 2.5 hours, four times per week. By the time you take into consideration the coming into school, the getting settled, the, I don't think they're going to be getting much instruction time. While I agree that the everyday contact is important, I just don't see it being really efficient. With the interim model number two, the, I think, technically, they have more classroom instruction, but as you mentioned, it wouldn't necessarily be with their classroom teacher, would they? So then a question with that, will they be still going to FIAED? Or is there a way that in the interim, teachers could double up on the ELA and the math? So that they would still get four half-days of those classes of instruction? Yeah, and then I, let's see. With regards to the daycare, to the Y care, you gave us numbers of seats available. What? How does that fit the needs of the community? Will there still be students not able to get into those situations? I guess with the interim, if I go back to Option 1, that's a lot of transportation for students. A lot of time on being transported from one place to the other. So that's what I noticed, and I, yeah, for now.
Thank you, Deb. Alright, Jim Bowman.
Yes, Jim here. The two primary criteria for me are safety and instruction. I think Option 1 is the best on student safety and staff safety, because we get rid of the lunch and we have a small class size. I see lunch as a big risk, because you got all these kids in a room and faster off. I think Option 1 is also a step forward on instruction, because there's some in-person instruction, and parents and teachers can focus on it. Option 2 is not as good on safety because of lunch. It is better on instruction than what we've got now. Option 3, or excuse me, the original option, is weak on safety. If we could get the community infections down low enough, I'd be just fine with that original options. But our community spread is just too high right now. I like Option 1 as a transition.
Thank you, Jim. Alright, Barry O'Connor.
Whoops, am I unmuted?
We can hear you.
Alright, Option 1. It seems to me the students in that option will still need lunch and recess, particularly if they're in the Y or the Boys and Girls Club programs. Is that right? Whoops, that's a question. You still hear me?
We can, yep. Sorry, just trying to capture.
Okay, so parent reaction in the email seems to be quite negative for that particular choice, and I don't know to what extent whether it's 10 or 15, you know, people for whom it doesn't work, or is it truly the most challenging for families because of the daytime transportation needs? If they're probably not in the YMCA, I'm not sure where that comes from. So that's another question. One teacher who sent in a letter to us, email, said that colleagues or colleagues said that they would that the AMPM option would simply be just another version of virtual in terms of the activities of the kids. I don't, I'm wondering if that's true. It doesn't make a lot of sense to me that it is, but that was made and supposedly agreed to by many other teachers. And then is every kid guaranteed transport, say, to go home or to go somewhere else other than the classroom connection, so as it is? And so that's another question. I got a lot of questions. I do like it instructionally. I think the daily contact would help in terms of continuity and structuring afternoons for parents, frankly, or for otherwise in terms of setting up work to be done, et cetera. And then the other question I have about that model is, and both models, I guess, is where the seats will be again? I'm not sure I understood that for the kids who needed care outside of the classroom, like the classroom connection does now. They're in our buildings. And it sounded like they would still be in our buildings during the day, which kind of defeats the reduction in students in the building from us. Of course, there's potentially half as many kids that need this support because they're, you know, they're in school the other half of the time, or half of them are always in with teachers. So I'm just not sure how the logistics work, and I'm wondering how all that works down in Verona and those other school areas, and how the parents have received it and how they've adjusted to it. I don't know whether the group has much knowledge of how that works, but I suspect they do. The ABAA and BB, the second model, strikes me as, I think they're both, the one big thing is if siblings, older siblings, have the same schedule so that they go home together and perhaps even care for the older kids, care for the younger kids in the event that the parents are working or whatever, and whether it's transportation to make that possible is available four times a week rather than not at all, really, in terms of the AABB process. The other question is if a teacher were to become positive and quarantined, or, and the kids needed to be quarantined, you'd be doubling the kids potentially that need to be quarantined, entire class, if you have the both groups of kids there every day. So that's just one of the safety concerns that I don't think you mentioned. I'm not sure how that would work, because I, ads are with the AABB. Teachers may not need to be, or students may not to be quarantined if teacher gets sick on Monday or on the weekend, or impacts only one group of kids. Theoretically, the other group would have a sub then, and not need to be quarantined and could still be in person. So again, I shared Jim's question. Clearly, our objective would be to have kids in class all day in a traditional framework, but the community spread problems are are a concern for me. I know that's not a concern for all families, and and the literature is still out there on it, and it can be read different ways than it has been. But that's still a concern. I'm also concerned about the framework in a more general sense, and I'll just throw this out there, is that we, it's been interpreted that the community spread can be weighted at zero, apparently, by our administration in terms of making these decisions. And therefore, when we're up in critically high areas or the high areas, are we still going to consider in-person school? And I think that needs to be clarified, I guess, for my take on how we're doing things. And that's all. Thanks.
Thank you, Barry. Chris Soder.
I have some of the same concerns, so I'm going to try and just put down some things that haven't been mentioned. The AM and PM, the continuity in the instruction, I think, is is one of the benefits in having it, having instruction four days a week. However, I do believe that it's more challenging for the families in terms of transportation and childcare. And then the possibility of students at different levels, elementary, middle school, and high school, all being on a different schedule. It appears to be safer in school, because there wouldn't be times when masks are removed. And then fewer large groups situations, such as recess. But I'm wondering if there's the possibility for more exposure due to being in multiple settings per day. I also would like clarity on the childcare arrangements through the Y and the Boys and Girls Club in terms of whether the numbers that were shared would meet the needs, and also just a little bit more clarity on how that works, either in school or being transported to another location. Then in the AABB model, it may be less challenging for families, again, because of them being on a similar schedule or needing to just find the childcare for the two to three days a week. But I do believe that the safety may be more difficult, more challenging because of the mask removal for lunch, recess, possibility, and the breakfast. Both the AMPM and the AABB models have smaller groups than the original plan, so that's a benefit. With the AABB model, it seems as if there would be less movement throughout the community. But again, I'm not sure about the before and after-school care. It would seem that much of that could be done on-site, which would eliminate It would seem that much of that could be done on-site, which would eliminate movement. I'm wondering, it seems like there's some confusion as to how educators would face the challenge of doing the AABB when they had, the students are virtual in that if they have questions, would educators be expected then to be trying to get back to those students who are virtual as well as those who are in person? And I'm just wondering a little bit more about how that would work. I think it's, I think it was stated that the students in the virtual model would be working on their own, but I'm wondering in reality how families will view that. Will the families expect that if there's a question that they get a relatively immediate response? Also, in the AABB model, the grades five and six. No, I take that back. In the AM PM model, if grades five and six are at that model, then when the transition is made, they would have a completely different model that they're looking at possibly. Also, I have a question about the surveying of the staff and parents. I saw a survey regarding the AM PM model. And if I understood that correctly, it was 20% of the staff that responded. And I'm wondering if there was a survey regarding the AABB model, if that's something that's a possibility? And also for families, if we were to adopt an interim model? As far as the original plan, I am also concerned about community spread and the full-day option. There's a lot of information out there. And I'm just still concerned about that.
Thank you, Chris. Anything else for me to collect here from you?
I'm good. Thank you.
Great, thank you. All right, and Gary Anki.
Right, Steve, I'll try not to be redundant here with what was said before, but I'm wondering if there was any staff, any teachers, that is, or parents on the committee. I think it's important that they have some ownership of some of these models as they're created. And along with that, kind of what Chris alluded to, I'm wondering that if there was any input gathered from district parents or teachers on the front end versus the back end. And that really applies to both the option one and the option two. And I'm still not clear on what actually triggered the interest into introducing these two options. I know there was some, there was three statements about the layering was successful, but I'm wondering if it's deeper than that. Is there some statistics or some wins at other districts that have used these models that we as a board should know about? Or some losses, you know, for somebody that maybe was doing the full in-person that we had suggested back in August? I'm curious about more data from existing districts on all three of these models actually as opposed to knowing that Dane County has six or whatever it was, seven districts that used it. Yeah, I think that's all I have.
All right, thank you. Okay, so I'm going to stop share just so I can call up the questions here on our end, but we can also engage in hopefully a conversation during our time together. So for our presenting group, the first question that was brought forward by Kay was, and actually this was represented by a variety of board members, is differences in numbers as far as seats available through our community partners. And so just looking for information from our members that would help assist in that area.
I can take that one, Steve. I spoke with both representatives from the Boys and Girls Club in the Y as recent as Friday, related to where their numbers are at. And so I'll start with the YMCA with their 300 seats. Again, they're planning on offering every family an option to have care on Wednesdays. So that's where they started and they have 300 seats available. They have looked into other locations that they can offer pods. So they have been able to secure more seats. And maybe that's the difference, Kay, from what you've heard originally. But they have actively over the last week secured more spaces to offer the service. So they started with the Wednesday and there was 300 seats for Wednesday. So with that then, if it was an AM PM, they would have 150 seats in the morning and 150 seats in the afternoon. If it's an AABB, they would have 150 seats on Monday and Tuesday and 150 seats on Wednesday or Thursday and Friday because of course both of those groups, AM PM or AABB, would be coming together on Wednesday. The other option they have is the before and after-school care that they would offer at the 13 sites that they serve. And so I know a question was asked about building capacity, but this would be before and after the school day and not during, where we need to use those spaces to have flexibility for moving some of our smaller office, smaller classroom spaces into larger areas as well as to have some flexibility if we have supervision concerns due to some failures. So this was specifically the 1,000 seats that the Y quoted are what they normally have and they'd be able to continue doing, but it wouldn't be during the school day, before and after school. So really offering options for families if they only need a before-school option, they could do that on-site or in after-school. But then also, if they are taking care at the Y directly, they would have before and after-school and during. As far as the Boys and Girls Club, their 200 seats would be offering, they have a capacity for 100 in their footprint. So it's 200 overall, again, 100 AM, 100 PM, or 100 on AABB and 100 Monday, Tuesday, and 100 Thursday, Friday. The reason they're going to be able to fit, keep to that 100 on Wednesday is that they have chosen to provide families the option of every other Wednesday for care. So again, they are looking forward to doing before and after-school option on-site at Highlands and if they are able to secure the staff offering at the other three club sites that they have in our buildings. As far as how is the transport work for the Y, we will have bus shuttles at all 13 sites, picking up students, following our mitigation strategies in our buses that have already been planned to take them directly from the school sites to the Y. And then at the, prior to the start of the PM session, the buses would be loaded at the Y and then brought back to the school site. Again, the mitigation plan for the Y is that, and the Boys and Girls Club, is that they will be potted by school and then organized accordingly by class, grade level or classroom. I'm looking at all the notes, other questions, Boys and-
Nan, one other question that related to the last question is, will some kids then have to go to the Y for their afternoon and come back for their after-care?
No, no.
They'll be able to stay at the Y?
Yes, so it's really, and that's how they're opening up additional seats, is they're offering options for families. They could, if they need before-school and during. If I'm a PM student in the afternoon, I need care before-school and in the morning. So I would be at the Y, then I'd get on the bus, you know, after lunch and then go to school. Now then they could, if a family does not need care after-school, they could go home at 3:20. But if they need after-school care, they could stay at school. So really, they're providing multiple different options for families in that manner.
And they believe they can get the staffing without our paraprofessionals?
Yes, and that was what I was thinking. I have a note here. They did an initial registration of all Classroom Connections families and based on those initial registrations, both organizations confirm that they will be minimally be able to meet the needs of the Classroom Connections families. And, but of course, waiting to hear a little bit more to finalize because we have not given out AM PM assignments yet to families, so they have to work that through.
So knowing we do have limited time together, Nan, were there other key areas that you wanted to address? I know there's a couple that I was going to jump in as well regarding questions we captured, but I know that the Y and Boys and Girls Club was a big piece.
Yeah, the other question that came up was about eligible for transportation and families that are normally eligible for transportation will be provided bus transportation to and from school. That was another question. And then another item, I know, I think, Chris, you asked about the responsiveness of teachers in the AABB model, knowing that they have half the class in front of them during the day and how would the at-home or the virtual students receive? It would be difficult because as I said, that classroom teacher has half their class in front of them. But we are looking and talking about different options where we could set up almost a hotline in a sense of support either through use of paraprofessionals or other staff members to try and get responses back to those families as quickly as possible because we know that's important.
Another question that we had gathered as a group was the interest with respect to AM PM, knowing this wasn't part of the original framework. Whether it's Nan or, I guess, yeah, Nan, through the work that our school nurses contributed as well. Additional information we could provide the board regarding what led to the AM PM.
Say that again, Steve, I'm sorry.
So the question relating to what led to the AM PM consideration, knowing that wasn't part of the original framework?
Actually, Andrea, if you'd like to take that, I know you were part of that initial discussion.
We had done our research, I think, as we've had students now in our building in smaller groups phased in. And again, our focus was around the developmental level of our early learners and just knowing that if you have students two days a week, but then you don't have them for five, we just felt that there was too big of a leg time and a little bit too much asynchronous time for younger students who need a little bit more support in that asynchronous learning. So that's when we did some of the research with some other school districts. I don't have all of the data, but I know we listed, a lot of them are Dane County, most of them are Dane County. And I think the one piece that we really wanted to consider, especially looking at our, you know, our community spread and numbers, was how do we bring students back safely and try to keep it as consistent as possible with them? To be in and stay in and kind of learning what we've learned from the phased-in approach. So that was kind of what sparked the, in August, July, August, of course, we'd been doing planning and work, but every day, every month, we're learning more, I think, about the virus. We're learning more about mitigation practices that do prove, you know, to help certainly. And so that's what kind of sparked for the youngest learners to have a really laser-light focus on the developmental learning of that group and what could be a little bit more responsive and helpful to them, knowing that any interim plan has its challenges and barriers.
Another question that came up, thank you, Andrea. Another question that came up within our discussion was representation within our work groups. And so that representation was through administrators at the site level, district administrators, and also nurses that participated from various sites as well. So to my understanding, it was, did not have staff or families, but did have representation from our different schools at different levels. Anything else that we wanted to add regarding representation in our work groups? All right, looking at other questions that were shared out by our board members here. Key question Barry had was, would we still consider in-person instruction if the community burden is high? Judy, would you like to refer to the statement that went out as part of your overall communication relating to that issue?
I think, you know, Barry, to your point, and we've had, you and I've had conversations about this, that we still have that as an overarching piece of what we're looking at. It's just, it's a piece of that overall picture. So when we added the CDC guidance, which included the mitigation strategies, those were considered to be equal factors. So we never lose, you know, the picture of the community numbers and burden. But as we are seeing that level, then it's our responsibility to raise the level of the mitigation strategies. And so that's partially where this interim came in, this phased approach, knowing that our numbers in the community are still high. So what are we going to do then to balance that with the safety piece that we're looking at as a team? And so we never lose that as a piece of what we're looking at. It's a factor. It's a very important factor. But what we've added to the matrix is the mitigation strategies, which are considered to be a very, very important key piece of keeping our students as safe as possible and our staff as safe as possible.
Deb, you had a question that was captured about ELA and math with respect to the AABB model. And your question that was captured was, could those core content areas be doubled up? And my answer on the instructional end is yes. I believe we have multiple options that we could use as far as what would implementation look like, particularly when we look at our core content areas of mathematics and ELA and then also the delivery of our specials and what that would look like. So I do believe that, yes, that even though logistically we have the two days in person, three days asynchronous, yes, I believe that even in conversations that we've had with our math and ELA curriculum directors, that certainly we have opportunities of even thinking about what AM PM would look like and almost turning it on its side as far as what those consecutive days would look like in person so that we could really maximize that time together. Also noticing, you know, what other questions, Gary, that you had, partially, I think, addressed by Andrea as far as information from other districts and what Andrea also shared regarding interest for the interim models. But then additional input gathered on the front end versus the back end. Again, as part of the, you know, the ongoing feedback that we've received through sites as we continue through our level meetings to interact with our principals who are also then always bringing forward, what are those overarching concerns that we have among all 16 of our schools at the elementary level and our four middle schools? Same thing as James leads the middle-level meetings so that we're having those conversations collaboratively to see what those themes are among our different buildings throughout the district at the level so that it's also making sure we're connecting right at the site level overall. So I'm noticing timelines. We have about, I believe, 10 minutes before our full session. So this was the conclusion on the presentation part. And certainly this doesn't answer all the questions that you have as board members, knowing that additional dialogue will take place in our full work session. But Judy, I'll just kind of turn things back to you as far as wrapping up this portion of our time together.
So our purpose tonight was to give you background information and a full overview of the process that was used to study the interim hybrid options and to give you a chance to hear that directly from two of our principal work group members. So again, thank you to Andrea and Carrie for being here and sharing your perspectives and to help us see the considerations that you used as a team as you worked through this process. And I'd also like to thank Nan and Steve for their work in preparing tonight's presentation and leading us to a place where we hopefully have been able to provide you with the background information you need to help us in the later part of the board meeting when we come to that point in the agenda. So thank you.
Okay.
So thank you very much. Now, Deb, I noticed your hand is up. Can-
So thank you very much. Now, Deb, I noticed your hand is up. Can your question wait for the board meeting when we have this discussion? Looks like, okay, thank you. So with that, we will take, it looks like we have now an eight-minute break before the board meeting starts. Just a reminder for board members to turn off your video and your cameras and but just stay on the call.
And also muting.
Oh, what did I just say? I'm so sorry. Yes, thank you. Turn off, mute and turn off your camera. Thank you.
So I'll start with roll call of board members. Gary Yonkey.
Here.
Barry O'Connor.
Here.
Jim Bowman.
Here.
Deb Truman.
Here.
And Chris Sauter.
Here.
Okay, so we have all six board members with us tonight. And then others in attendance, Dr. Judy Baseman Superintendent. And then also from the leadership team, Ben Vogel, James Huggins, Nan Bunnell, Greg Harches, Polly Van den Bogard, Steve Harrison, Julie King, Matt Zimmerman, and then Clara Kopplinger, who will help us keep everything straight tonight. And also joining us tonight Attorney Kirk String with String Addison. Welcome Kirk, thank you for joining us. So I think if I've missed an introduction, I apologize. I think I have everyone. So next would be, I would like approval of board meeting minutes from November 23 as well as December 3.
Here, we're going to do the pledge of allegiance.
Oh, thank you.
No problem.
I really appreciate that reminder. Yes, please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice. Okay, thank you for that reminder. And now if we could move on to approving board meeting minutes from November 23 and December 3.
I move to approve.
I'll second.
Any discussion or clarification on those minutes? Okay, I don't see any hands raised. Clara, can we have roll call, please?
Chris Sauter.
Aye.
Barry O'Connor.
Aye.
Jim Bowman.
Aye.
Kay Egger.
Aye.
Gary Yonkey.
Aye.
Deb Truman.
Aye.
All right, and then next would be approval of tonight's agenda.
I move approval of the agenda.
I'll second that.
Okay, is there any discussion or clarification on the agenda? Deb, I think you might be muted.
Okay. I have a statement that I'm going to read about my, well, my discussion. Because of the large amount of public input we have had regarding the issue of K-4 students returning to school, and because of the information that will be shared regarding a meeting held with administration, city health officials, and a dedicated group of local professionals, and because this item requires a decision that should not be rushed, but rather made once all the information has been pondered, I make a motion to amend the agenda to remove item 5C from this agenda and place it on an agenda for a special board meeting to be held before next Tuesday, but after a public forum to be held on or before Sunday, December 20. So my motion is to remove 5C from the agenda for tonight and put it on a special meeting agenda so we can get parent input.
So Deb is making a motion to amend tonight's agenda.
And a second would allow for discussion.
I think we already have a motion and a second. So just looking to Kirk for clarification.
I'm sorry, the motion is to amend the main motion, and so the motion to amend has priority and can be considered by the board, but as a supplemental motion, it does require a second and if seconded, its own discussion and vote in order to amend the motion.
Thank you.
So is there a second to Deb's amendment?
I'll second the motion. I think it's healthy that we have a discussion about it.
Okay. So discussion on the amendment which would pull 5C from tonight's agenda.
Okay, we have had many, many, many emails, communication from parents on both sides of the story. I haven't had a chance to read them all because there have been so many. We heard that parental input was not really a part of this process. We have a lot of questions about this. I just feel it's important that we get, that we have a community input session before we vote on this. We've been, yeah, it's been all email and that can't really portray people's thoughts and questions we can't even think of. So I think it's important that we postpone this and get the parents in or have some parent input, whether it be live or virtual, just, that's my reasoning. And we are going to hear more from a different point of view from some medical professionals. And I believe that that, I don't know if that's before or after we vote on this, but I just think there's a lot of information that needs to be put out there before we make a change.
Barry, your hand is up.
Yes, yeah, I oppose the motion simply because I actually, what Deb had said was that we've received hundreds of emails on this issue, not specifically this issue, but I don't know how many there have been, but there have been a lot. And, you know, I've, from both sides of the discussion, and I find that when you have open forum, you don't necessarily get more people because it takes a little more courage to get up and speak than it does to write an email. And I, you know, but I've read every single email. It's taken a lot of time and it's hard to read because a lot of them are critical and some of them are downright insulting. But at the same time, I've read every single one because I value them. And I'm not sure having the, what would likely be the same people get up in front of us and say the same things even more vigorously on either side of this issue isn't gonna add a whole lot to the discussion. I'm glad for the robust input and discussion that's being offered to us. You know, my question sometimes is, as I've asked in the meetings, is this representative of our general parent group or our general staff group? Or is it just the most assertive folks? And, you know, and I don't know the answer to that, but I don't think an open session discussion by the same people is going to necessarily solve that dilemma in terms of getting input. We do do surveys, which we just discussed, and got considerable amount of input from 5,000 families. I'm not sure any of us want to sit through 5,000 presentations in an open board meeting. That'll probably repeat the same content and same ideas that we're all quite familiar with. And I guess if you don't read them, that's a disadvantage, but that's, that doesn't mean that it's, it calls for a different forum. So here's my thought. Thank you.
Gary, your hand is up.
Yeah, Kay, I'll come at it from a different angle. So Judy, I think in August, we took a survey, was it the end of July? And then those surveys were due back in early August, was it August 7, something like that? So we could look at a match of families interested in, you know, this model versus virtual and just to see how staffing lined up, those kind of things. Am I right? So is that gonna happen? And maybe we'll find this out in our discussion, you know, later this evening. So I apologize if I'm jumping ahead, but that's information that I'd really like to know as a board member, how that lines up in terms of families wanting to do this, families wanting to do that, and where does staff, how does that all mix together for us to run our operation?
Understood. We would have that. Don't have it here tonight, obviously, but...
But there is a plan to do that here in the next coming weeks or something, I would guess. You'd have to do, right?
Well, we haven't created a new survey. I thought you were referring to the information back from August.
Right, but I'm talking about...
Justing that we might repeat.
Right, because that seemed to make sense at that time, right, to allow us to plan. So in order to plan properly, it's one thing to have the models presented, but now we have to see if we have the staffing, right, and the components to make it happen.
Well, we do know we have the staffing in place.
Would you have the information along that line, families? There's a deadline, I believe, December 7th, that families were to choose if they would stay virtual for the second semester or want to not be virtual. Give us, I mean, would that help in the discussion when we get to that point on the agenda, when we're talking about, is there any of that input that you would be able to provide?
Nan, would you have that?
Yes, I have. I have that information and can share that whenever it's needed.
Okay, so on the tonight's agenda, you would, when we get to that point on the agenda?
Yes, I have that information.
Okay, all right, thank you. Deb, your hand is back up.
Yes, does Nan also have information or thoughts on families that have felt that they needed to go to fully virtual because they weren't able to make arrangements for their kids for school? Okay, so are they going to be able to make some other arrangements now, or are they locked into that? I mean, if we, if we would, whatever comes out of that, if parents had made a commitment to a model, are they going to be able to change that depending on the decision that's made about the interim model?
Yes, we've allowed school choice all the way through the first semester and we would continue doing that as well. Of course, it always is limited by the number of seats we have, but we've been able to honor all but nine to this point.
Okay, but on a slightly different twist, let's say that I said, because parents were told they would do the AB, the half days, and I, as a parent, said, there's no way I can get my child to do that because of transportation and working and different things. Depending on the outcome of our vote tonight, is that person going to have an option to change their mind about which choice they are able to make for their children, for their child for school?
Yes.
Okay, so that December 7th survey wasn't binding.
Well, we have created staffing plans based on it, but we would always work with families to ensure that they have the model that they're looking for.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so just as a reminder, our discussion right now should be whether or not we want to consider an amendment to pull 5C from tonight's agenda. Not so we get too far into discussing actually 5C. So is there anything else that discussion relating to voting on the amendment that was made by Deb and seconded?
Yes, yes, for me, Jim Bowman, for me, the issue is, do I have the information I need to select an option? And because I care a lot about instruction, I care a lot about our kids and what prepares them for the future, and I care a lot about their safety and the safety of our staff. I stay high level there and I kind of push myself to do that. And I want to know what's best for them, instruction and safety. And I'd like to know how that's seen by the great bulk of 10,000 families. I care so much about our parents and how this works for them. So I'm looking at large groups and I'm a little bit, I'm a little influenced by what Barry said in that I've heard a lot from people that have special interests and they are as important as anybody else, but they're not the full population. So I think that I'll have the information that's available at this point in time from our discussion today. And I don't think hearing from people that have strongly felt special interests in mind, I don't think that's going to sway me. I want to know about 10,000 parents and I'm going to keep pushing myself to figure out where those 10,000 feel.
Okay, so I don't see any other hands up. I will ask that, we have roll call, please Clara, on the amendment to pull 5C from tonight's agenda.
Jim Bowman.
No.
Kay Egger.
No.
Gary Yonkey.
No.
Deb Truman.
Yes.
Chris Sauter.
No.
Barry O'Connor.
Oh.
To the original motion to approve tonight's agenda. The motion was made and seconded. Any other discussion on that or I'll ask for roll call, please? I don't see any hands raised. Roll call, please Clara.
Barry O'Connor.
Aye.
Jim Bowman.
Aye.
Kay Egger.
Aye.
Gary Yonkey.
Aye.
Deb Truman.
Aye.
Chris Sauter.
Aye.
Okay. So then moving on to reports. The first is a report on public input communications. And first, I want to emphasize that the summary that is provided is not intended to detail the specifics of all the communications that board members that we have received, but rather it's to try to summarize the common themes that are expressed. All of the communications that have been shared and intended for public input have been distributed or made available to all board members for their own review and reflection. So again, you know, I want to emphasize that point and, you know, we take the concerns very seriously and we do read all of the emails that we received. So with that, the board received roughly 65 communications as public input for tonight's meeting. The vast majority of the letters addressed the proposed district plans for second semester and of those, most expressed support for in-person instruction in some form. Both parents and staff cite concerns of physical health and emotional wellbeing of our students and also point to studies that support schools operating safely with in-person instruction. There are questions of whether mitigation strategies will be consistently applied and what strategies will be used to assure that there is, for an example, consistent mask wearing. And I believe that this will also be a part of information that will be presented tonight under Dr. Baseman's report. There is also input on the challenges with the interim hybrid plans that are being presented. One of those most cited was the childcare and the challenges with transportation. And again, that, we will have more in-depth discussion on that. And then on the other hand, many individuals express reluctance to resume in-person instruction unless the community spread continues to decline. Questions were raised on why the matrix is not being followed as originally planned. And again, I think that this will be something that'll be touched on and provides more clarity, but Dr. Baseman will do that. And there are also letters supporting virtual learning. Although not perfect, family and staff are making it work. So in closing, many of those individuals writing to us recognize the challenges of the decisions before us and ask that we have serious in-depth discussion as we proceed. So those are the themes that I was able to garner from our communications. But of course, the, nothing would be, you know, reading the letters and feeling the heartfelt words, we all do that individually. So this is to capture, capture the themes. So then we can move on. Oh, Chris?
Hey, I just have a statement that I wish to make at this time. I would like to thank those who have communicated with us throughout this process. We have received input from hundreds of individuals with many different opinions and perspectives during this challenging and frustrating time in which nearly everything we knew as normal prior to the pandemic has changed. Special thanks to those who have expressed their thoughts, constructive criticism, and suggestions for improvement in a civil and respectful manner while refraining from personal attacks, insults, and threats. Thank you.
Okay, so then we'll move on to superintendent's report. Dr. Baseman.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to start out by just sharing information about our district COVID leadership team. The district COVID leadership team is coordinating our efforts to respond to the latest, most accurate information for school districts related to COVID-19. The group is co-facilitated by Polly Van den Bogard and Julie King and is made up of representative staff, including principals, school nurses, and leaders from our facilities and operations department. The COVID leadership team meets weekly and reviews the most current guidance from the CDC, the DHS, DPI, our city health officer, and our medical advisor. Any recommended updates to our current protocols, our safety guidelines, or other identified action steps are reviewed and brought forward to me and the district leadership team for review as needed. Any changes or updates are then shared with our administrators, our board members, our staff, or other stakeholder groups as appropriate. In addition, our website and any other published materials are updated with this new information. Building and departmental leaders ensure that their staff consistently follow the published guidelines and are made aware of any changes. With that, I'll call upon Polly Van den Bogard to share her information on the COVID leadership team.
Thank you, Dr. Baseman. Good evening, everybody. Have two topics to share with you this evening as updates. The first topic is a new CDC DHS quarantine recommendations and next steps. So the CDC has released new guidelines regarding specific criteria for shortening the length of quarantine for people identified as close contacts. The CDC still recognizes that a 14-day quarantine is the safest option. We have reviewed area districts and how they're electing to move forward as well as the data within our own school district. Given this, the district will continue with the current practice of requiring a 14-day quarantine for all close contacts and revisit after the winter break and prior to January 19. The second topic is executive summary of our administrative meeting with parent physician group. And so on Wednesday, December 9, a group of local physicians and medical providers met with members of the school district as well as Kurt Igabrech from the City of Appleton Public Health Officer and Dr. Lee Vogel, Mosaic Family Health and Advisor to Public Health. The local physician shared with district representatives Kurt and Dr. Lee Vogel a presentation in which five categories of data and information were shared. And you do have access to that PowerPoint. So one of the five areas that were shared were the dangers to a child from COVID-19. Dr. Burma shared that most children ages 1 through 18 have mild symptoms. Susceptibility of infections are low in children and in fact, lowest in children less than 10 years of age. The second topic was harms to children from school closure. Dr. Webster indicated that there is decreased learning due to school closures and data supports that academic progress has decreased by at least 30% according to research. She also indicated a decreased access to good nutrition and food, increase in obesity, weight gain, and an increase in abuse and mistreatment of children while in under-reporting when kids are not physically present in school and having less support from school staff. Dr. Webster also included that data and research supports a sharp increase in anxiety, depression, stress, and social isolation while there is a predicted increase in suicide rates and an increase in substance abuse. The third topic was the spread within schools. Dr. Servias shared that students-to-student transmission is rare while the most common would be staff-to-staff transmission. She also shared that school reopenings in other countries have not led to increased case counts where precautions are taken and that schools are not super spreaders. She specifically shared that community spread does not usually occur within schools and that transmission is lowest in elementary schools when compared to middle and high schools. The fourth topic was risk to teachers and staff. So Ryan Nadborowski shared that staff should be careful around other staff members, which supports what Dr. Servias indicated in regards to adult transmission being most common. He does recognize that there are some staff members who are in a heightened risk category. Mr. Nadborowski indicated that with high community spread, measures can be taken among staff in terms of prevention and protection. Those measures include having staff with full PPE, access to free testing, schools should be practicing safety measures, and schools should be tracking cases and doing contact tracing. He did recommend that districts consider remote working accommodations for staff over 60 or with underlying medical conditions. The fifth topic area was mitigation strategies. Dr. Jennifer Frank shared mitigation strategies that are proven to be effective. They include masking and PPE, physical distancing, hand hygiene, cleaning and disinfecting, ventilation, and a plan for those that don't feel well while in school as well as case investigation and contact tracing. Each of these areas discussed was backed up by research and data. These five individuals believe that schools should reopen and that with proper mitigation strategies, students and staff are able to be safe. They believe that we need to get our students into school and that while there is a risk, the risk is lower when at school. Kurt Igabrech shared that he respected these resources and the information shared while recognizing we're all working towards the same goal. Mr. Igabrech shared that the City of Appleton's data is in contrast to some of the information that was shared by this group of medical providers based on data from city contact tracers specific to a spread within our community and our schools. He discussed the demographics of Appleton and the impact of multi-generational homes as well as what has been occurring within childcare facilities. Dr. Lee Vogel acknowledged the level of expertise within this group and that each of us brings our perspectives and no one wants for children to suffer the consequences of COVID. She discussed that all of us share this burden together. Dr. Lee Vogel did share that the sheer size of ASD has to be taken into account and shared her reservations about bringing students back for in-person learning given where the community is right now and the burden this could place on the healthcare systems. Dr. Lee Vogel did share a link to a COVID-19 school resource library from Harvard and Massachusetts General Hospital.
Okay, with that, I'll call on Greg, please, to give us a report and update on our matrix.
Okay, so I'm going to ask Clara to bring up some slides that show the matrix and going to review our matrix and then share the numbers that support our matrix. So here's our matrix and as a reminder, we have primary criteria. And our primary criteria have three indicators. Those indicators are the burden in the City of Appleton, the burden in our tri-county region, and then our ability to implement five key mitigation strategies. And although there is some overlap in the burden in the City of Appleton and the burden in our tri-county region, we do feel that it is important to have both data points. And the reason is our district is made up of only 63% Appleton. So the City of Appleton, I should say, makes up 63% of our district. So the other 37% comes from Grand Chute, a little bit from Little Chute, town of Harrison, town of Manassia. So it's important that we use that tri-county region number. In addition to that, we know that over 2,000 students open and roll into our district from across the Fox Cities and also a large population of our staff live outside the City of Appleton. So although 25 out of our 27 schools fall within the Appleton city limits, we know that many of our families, many of our staff members live outside of Appleton. So we want to use that other number. What you'll see in this chart then, under targeted criteria for evaluation of models, is the CDC's risk level. Highest risk, higher risk, moderate risk, and lower and lowest risk. In the next column, you see in yellow that we have been in the highest risk for the last three weeks, as you'll see in subsequent slides for quite a while, which means we would be in the fully virtual model according to the burden in both the city and the tri-county region. But we would be in the fully in-person based on our five key mitigation strategies. So on the next slide, you will see the actual CDC indicators. So this is a CDC document, gives you a little bit more detail on those indicators. Most important to us at this time is way on the top right-hand side, you see that the highest risk of transmission is when the burden is greater than 200, which is where we've been for quite a while. And then you can see the five key mitigation strategies that are there. We're very confident in those strategies and our ability to meet those mitigation strategies. And I'll talk a little bit about that in a future slide. So when we look at the next chart, the next chart is the burden for the City of Appleton. Now that's the number of new cases over a 14-day period for a population of 100,000 people. So we have to convert that because the City of Appleton population's only about 75,000. If you start on the very left-hand side, that first column there, and you can see September 30th, we had a burden of 740 in Appleton. And then we increased and increased and increased until we got to October 28th. And October 28th was the high point, the peak for the burden in Appleton, 1,141. And we stayed about even for four weeks, and now we've dropped the last two weeks. So this number last week, Wednesday, of 732 is a really good indication that we're moving in the right direction. And a lot of the medical experts predicted that Thanksgiving would cause our burden to increase. That has not been the case here in Appleton or in the tri-county region. So, you know, we look at it as a reason for hope, some optimism here, that our community understands what they need to do. We're hopeful through the next holiday that we see the same type of numbers. When we look at the tri-county region, the numbers are even better. So on the 30th of September, our burden across the tri-county region, 1,085. It peaked on October 14th, 1,343, and now it's gone down for eight straight weeks. Last week, it was down to 479. So we are still in the highest risk level according to the CDC, but that number, that burden number, has gone down significantly, both in the City of Appleton and across our tri-county region. On the next slide, you will see the other indicators that we have. So we have a secondary set of criteria, and those are the DHS guidelines. Now, these go back to the summer, and we didn't change, we didn't drop these, we've kept them as part of our criteria. And the reason is they include trajectory. Where the CDC does not include trajectory, the DHS does. And it puts together the trajectory and the burden into what's called a composite score. Now, back when they came out with this information in the summer, these guidelines, they only had three levels for the composite score. They had high, medium, and low. But in October, the DHS added a very high category. And then in November, they added critically high. So our weekly trend, we remain very high. And there was no change in trajectory for the City of Appleton last week. We update these every Wednesday. The burden for the tri-county region remains very high, but the trajectory is shrinking for the tri-county region. Move over to the next column, the current status. You see, we were actually in the critically high at one point and now have dropped into the very high level for the City of Appleton. We never reached the critically high for the tri-county region. The next chart you see here is the actual chart that the state puts out for how you put that composite together of the trajectory and the burden. So the trajectory is either shrinking, means it's decreasing by more than 10%. Growing, it's increasing by more than 10%. Or anything between 10% plus or minus is no significant change. Then you can see the six levels that they now have for the burden. When you put those two pieces together, you get either low, medium, high, very high, or critically high. Last week, Wednesday, we were in the very high for the City of Appleton because we had no significant change in trajectory, but our burden was remained very high. For the tri-county region, we also would have been in very high, but we had a shrinking trajectory to go with a very high burden. On the next slide, you'll see the numbers that support this. So the trajectory as part of that composite score for the City of Appleton, when you look at this top chart in red, you see a percent change. And really, the City of Appleton has gone up a little bit, then down, stayed the same across these weeks. But you do see that we have had some good weeks there where we were shrinking, no change. And then the last three weeks, we've had four weeks, we've had either shrinking or no change. So as of last Wednesday, we had a no-change week because there wasn't more than 10% up or down. The numbers for the tri-county, just like the burden, their trajectory is much more positive. And so our last week of growing trajectory was October 14th. Since that time, we have had eight straight weeks of either no change or shrinking trajectory. For all the numbers for the tri-county region are down 60% to 70% in terms of our burden. So that's the information that supports our composite score for the DHS. And again, hope here, certainly a lot of positive numbers to look at in terms of how our burden is decreasing, how we are, trajectory is going in the right direction. Finally, our last piece, our last two indicators are pertaining to staffing. And so Julie King is going to talk about that.
Yes, thank you, Greg. So as you can see for our substitute pool, I'm just going to remind you, when we started the school year, we were at 52% of our pool that we had had the previous year. We are currently at 57%, so we are growing that pool. And then as far as our educators, right now, we are 99% staffed. I know one of the questions has been, what does paraprofessional staffing look? What does educator staffing look like, given the model that we were coming, we're coming back in? And I can share, as far as our paraprofessionals, we're at 87.5% fill rate. Just be mindful that we did just have our deadline for additional leaves of absence, as well as we have had an uptick of resignations and retirements from paraprofessionals. And then we are also right now staffing for health isolation room paras, which is almost complete, so that adds to our numbers. So just as another data point, as we move into the staffing piece, we did receive 70 requests for ADA accommodations and leaves of absence by the December 4th timeline. And the end result, we were able to accommodate many of those requests. There are six educator leaves and 10 paraprofessional leaves that are pending. Those would be new leaves, given the model. So 16 physicians, which are included in our 99% fill rate and the 87.5% fill rate that I have referenced. Am I able then to share my screen? For the next part?
Yes.
Okay, can you see the COVID tracker?
Yes.
Thank you. So one of the other pieces that I'm just going to speak to is our COVID case tracker. So there were some revisions that were made today that were put into place last week. So one request we've been having from staff and the community has been for the aggregate numbers. So the total numbers of students and staff, positive cases and quarantines for the year. So this data is through December 8th and includes those positive cases for both staff and students. In addition, we made a couple of adjustments, adding Appleton community to Appleton Community 4K, both the Early Learning Center and the Welcome Center. And we did further disaggregate out our alternative programs to include Central Higher Ground Pride and Project Search, and then listed our district offices again, which were previously listed. So this is the complete picture of all of our sites and schools, our staff and our students. As another note, one piece that we did add is just the co-curricular dashboard. So we began this data on December 11th. So this is data up through December 11th for any of our co-curriculars, so active cases and active quarantines. One piece to note, this is not additional information to the information above. It is a duplication, but a subsection, so you can view what is, what is really the co-curriculars? Where were those co-curriculars originating as far as active and quarantines? And then this cumulative data will be the cumulative data for the year in that subsection. Okay? And then the final piece that I have, stop and reshare. And I believe Polly is going to join me for student part. So this is again the data that I shared at the previous meeting, just to show what the the trend has been for staff. And the two key pieces here are the red positive cases. And then the orange is the close contact cases or those quarantines. So you can see, as Greg had laid out, very much so, following that community trend with the positive cases as shown there. So the last four weeks have been lower than those six weeks prior for staff data. And then below here is just showing you the counts for the different reasons why we have absences, whether it be a positive case, close contact, self-symptoms, or short-term childcare and school closure and the total absences. So I would like to point out also, because this has been a question, 11 of our 179 positive cases, or 6%, can be attributed to in-district spread. 178 of our total quarantines, or 37%, are due to close contacts of onsite cases. So when we think about what's happening inside of our schools with staff, and Polly will share students, those are two key pieces that we continue to look at. All right, Polly?
All right, thank you, Julie.
Julie, can I just ask a clarification point? I don't know if we're going to be able to ask questions at some point, but those individual days of absence, or are those individuals?
These are counts. So these are individual incidents. So what that means is if somebody was a positive case, but then a month later, their school closed down, they might be counted once here and once here, but they are not counted for 14 days like our tracker data.
Well, this is, this is 179 different teachers or different positive cases? Or is it 179 days of absence because you're?
179 people, individuals. Yep.
Right. So in similar fashion, we wanted to share the student data. And again, just a reminder, the student data is those for in-person learners right now. So it is a smaller subset of our population, but it is those that are in buildings. So you'll see in similar fashion, the blue line is those students that have been, received a positive result. And the orange line is those that were quarantined due to being in person. Okay, so you do see a little bit of an uptick the last two days, but pretty consistent as we've gone through the year in terms of positive. Overall, now, we look at students a little bit differently, so we don't have the degrees of separation that Julie does with the staff. But we look at how many students were close contact, as identified by the district contact tracers, and how many were positive total. And you'll see that 42 positives since September 16th and 46 that were identified as close contacts. In similar fashion, three of those positive cases were spread within the district based on contact tracing and going back to those index cases. So again, of that 42, three can be attributed to in-district transmission. And again, close contacts, again, those are only the students that are in person and had to quarantine as a result of either a staff member or another student having to quarantine due to a positive test result. So only in-person learners.
I do want to clarify, just that is one of the differences between the staff data and the student data, because our employees have a requirement to report if they're a positive case, whether they're onsite or not. So these aren't 179 onsite positive cases, this is our total work population, whether they're teleworking currently or they're onsite.
So with that, I think at this point, we can pause and see if there are any questions on the information shared during my report.
Looks like Deb has a hand up.
Deb?
Yeah. Julie, what would be your target? Or Polly, what would be a target percentage of positive cases? I mean, because you're probably not going to get zero. What would be your target before, I mean, okay, so once we go back to school, what would be a target that you'd look for before you would say, oh, we better shut down this classroom? Or has that been thought about?
Yeah, I can speak Deb to what's happening currently. Is that through our internal contact tracers, we always look first at the student level. So instead of saying, there's one case here, let's shut the whole class down. We really say, okay, as a contact tracer, as they're going through those questions, who was within six feet of this individual? What was that structure within the classroom like? Were students potted? Were students all together? And really having that dialogue with the person that or individual that tested positive to gain that background knowledge. And then they assess from there. So at this time, we take it at a student level. We have had to shut down programs or classrooms due to either all of the students being within a close contact or staff members or not having the staffing to keep that classroom going. So it's not a, you know, at this percentage, we're going to close this classroom down at this time. It's really looking at that student level and how many are left? And do we have a staff member to be able to continue to teach in person and making those decisions based on that information?
Thank you.
Gary?
Polly, you mentioned you kind of do an analysis when something happens, when a positive case appears, right? I'm curious if we've learned anything, like there was maybe a hole in the mitigation techniques that maybe retraining has to be done or something else has to be done. Have we learned anything that we can apply, you know, going forward or?
Great question. I think one of the pieces that as we review cases with our COVID nurse and the tracers is giving teachers permission to maybe teach a little bit differently. So typically, we like to go up and down the aisles, check in with kids, do small groups. And when we've done that, when we've taught the traditional way, that's when we find more kids are identified as close contacts and having to shut down that whole program. So giving teachers permission to stand in the front of the room, it's going to feel awkward. It's going to feel challenging, but in order to keep our classrooms open, we want to make that happen. I think the other piece from a lens of our current in-person is, again, how do we create some smaller groups? So that if one student or one staff member receives that positive diagnosis, how does it not take the rest of the class and quarantine them? How can we keep that to a small? how does it not take the rest of the class and quarantine them? How can we keep that to a small group? So those are really two big pieces of conversation we're having currently with the in-person instruction as well as moving forward.
Interesting, thanks.
Barry.
Yeah, so what's the bottom line here in terms of burden, in terms of that metric? Maybe Greg, you're the person to ask, because when we first, when the January 19th option was put out there, it was stated that we can't have any rising caseload in our community. And at the time, we were at 1100 or 1150. Is that the threshold? And now since then, it's come down, but we're still not real close to what the CDC has in their criteria, which is 200. The state of Minnesota has adjusted theirs to a higher number, but nothing close to what we've experienced or what we made a commitment to when we put this project out. So my question I've asked a couple of times now is, does the burden rate have any weight in this decision? I mean, simple question, is there an answer?
Yeah, I think the answer is burden is one of four criteria. Burden, trajectory, staffing, mitigation. Those four pieces have to go together. Along with that, the addendum that was adopted in August has another piece, and that is social, emotional, and academic needs of our students. So it's not an easy answer. It is not. One number will dictate whether we feel we should go back in person or not. It is those four criteria and then the social, emotional, academic needs of our students. And so I know a lot of folks have pointed to that burden number, probably because it's the easiest to understand. It's a very, it's a black and white number. But really, we need to look at quantitatively, qualitatively, what does our matrix tell us? And so I don't know if that answers your question or not.
Greg, it doesn't. You know, the state of Wisconsin DHS lists that as a key criteria that can't be ignored and can't be underweighted. The CDC does the same thing, and we're smarter than they are, apparently. That we can somehow work out a system that doesn't weight it at all, or allows it to be at numbers that are considered the worst pandemic numbers in the world. Is that, and so that's why I'm asking the question. We gave you permission to work within our framework, but I don't think anybody in the framework, when we settled on that framework, were under the assumption that the burden numbers would be negligible in terms of the calculation, and that's where they are. And so, you know, I have a real concern with that, and I would suggest that we rewrite our guidelines for you to make sure that burden is part of it, because that's the recommendation of almost every person who's an epidemiologist. Now, there are arguments about whether schools can open, but most of them depend on community spread as being one of the main factors. And before, and I have some questions about the physicians' report to you. And I don't know if any of you had any questions about that. I know some of you were on the phone or the Zoom session with the DHS and the nursing staff, and we were invited to participate or to listen. And Dr. Westergaard there made some very clear comments about this topic. He is the chief medical officer of our Department of Health Services. Dr. Fauci has talked about it. He hasn't said you ignore, mitigate, you can place all your eggs in the mitigation basket. It's important, but this is what we're doing, is the way it sounds. And right now, we're relieved that things are going down, and I am too. I hope we get back into school and session. I'm not sure it should be 200 or whatever number that is. But we can't just simply say we don't have, we just can't let it go above 1100 anymore. We can't have a trajectory. We made a statement that trajectory was the key factor, and ignoring whatever level it was at, which was at the time critically high. And for example, the medical physician, the physicians who did the report to you stated that there's been success in several countries in Europe. Every one of them had a very low burden rate, and that was part of their success. And that was pointed out in the literature, that was the research that they cited. I don't know if you guys read the literature, but I did. And it doesn't say necessarily what they said it was going to say. And the report, the thing that Lee Vogel gave you was far more clear and far more substantial research and data from the Harvard Compendium. And you look through that, and I don't think the source that they used was even in that. It was from a Brigham Young, Department of Water Pollution Control. Those were the four people that put together the sources for three of their statements. And they were drawing from other research, but they weren't epidemiologists. So I just want us to be on a solid footing as we move forward. Because I think there's even some legal issue here in terms of the DHS. The CDC are giving us guidelines, and we're choosing to ignore it. And if someone gets real sick and we've ignored it, where are we?
We're fine. We've checked with our insurance carrier, we've checked with legal, there's no liability.
We're fine on a legal basis, but are we fine on an ethical and on a, and on a how do I feel about this basis? How do we feel about it? So I'm laying my cards on the table here. I'm very unsettled by what we, I'm really hoping we can get in person. And I think there's a good argument for elementary kids. The research has kind of stabilized on that. But again, you can't whitewash it. The doctors mentioned the study that was done in Marshfield and Nashville, that Dr. Westergaard cited. That said that elementary kids do transmit, and they are the source of infection in families. And families are a little like schools, you know? They don't wear masks, but they can be transmitters, and they can do it at a pretty high rate. So I mean, I'm just saying, let's be honest about the data. I know some of our critics in the community think we don't look at data. I look at data. I read the research studies, and I try and understand them and weigh them. Some of the research studies equivocated on the point that was being supported by the physicians group. They said that it may be, there are questions about, questions about whether young kids are even exposed enough to be carriers, because they're protected by their parents, whereas high school kids, they wear their mask during class, and then they go out and they get in their cars, take their mask off and drive home together, groups of five or six. That's where the problems occur, and maybe why it doesn't occur so much in elementary. But let's just be honest about it, is all I'm saying. Let's just make sure we know what we're doing. So that when we get to January 19th, we aren't putting kids in school when the epidemic's raging, because we can make them wear masks. So I think we can, and I think elementary kids might be fine. You know, I'm not, I'm not saying no, I'm just saying, let's not fudge the data, which is happening all over the country because of pressure and not because of health. So there, that's enough. I'm done. But that's where I'm at.
Deb?
I would like to say that remember that data or health is not solely defined by a negative COVID test. There is more to consider than these numbers. Science is still all over the board. And depending on which news station or which publication you read, you can find evidence for whichever side you want to believe on. You read the data. I am looking forward to the time that we see the data about the attendance and engagement. Because is that data going to be as valuable as the numbers of COVID cases or more valuable? You talk about kids succumbing to the COVID virus. What about those students who are, we talked about this another time, about suicide? Aren't we concerned that there are some kids someday that's really going to hurt him or herself because they can't take this anymore? We need a choice for those people. Numbers are not everything. It's a part of it, but after all, that's why we have our conscience, our soul, whatever you believe in, in our gut, we need to know what we're doing is right for the students regardless of the numbers sometimes. And just use, go with the mitigation. I think that's part of what we're going to be talking about later tonight when we discuss amending the matrix, so I'll save it for later. Thank you.
Gary.
Greg, I think it might be helpful. Can you go through that list again of the items that I know is documented? But I think just for all of us to hear, because it's my understanding that there are multiple items in that list. And I think maybe what we're debating here is the weight that is put on burden or the weight that's put on staffing, for instance. So say the burden rate is way down in January, but we don't have enough staffing. You know, we can't put people in school if we don't have the staff, things like that. So why don't you, can you rattle through those again, burden, trajectory?
Burden, trajectory, mitigation strategies, and staffing. And other than mitigation strategies, the burden, trajectory, and staffing have been in our matrix since August 12th. We added in September the mitigation strategies under the direction of the CDC guidelines. So it's been those four since the middle of September. And then we, what really, the addendum that goes with that is the social, emotional, and academic needs.
Right, and I think what you said before about quantitative and qualitative is important to remember, because it sounds like you can, if you want, put the heaviest weight on the burden and then disregard the other ones, or vice versa. So maybe that's what we have to have a, you know, addendum about is the proper weight on each of those.
And some districts have done that. Some districts have changed their matrix. Recently, a district locally here went up to 600 for their burden and said that if their burden dropped below 600. So we're seeing a lot of different pieces of how, I mean, it's really up to the district to decide philosophically, what is your data going to tell you? Because our matrix, I should say, our metrics really aren't any different than they are in other communities locally here. So it really comes down to philosophically, what do we believe?
Thanks.
Jim?
A very good answer from my point of view is to bring down community infections. I'm pleased that this board voted unanimously for a resolution that addresses community infections and encourages the whole community to act on them. A similar presentation was made to a service club, a large service club in Appleton earlier this week. They have a recent resolution also presented to them that their board's going to consider. So I'm hopeful other service clubs will similarly act. So these groups, if there's enough of them, can make a difference.
And Chris?
I appreciate the additions to the COVID tracker. I think it's really helpful for us as board members and also for the community to see that information. I was particularly interested in the co-curricular additions and thinking about the number of students who are participating and then looking at that data. So I appreciate that. I'm wondering about, in the information that was just cited as how the decisions are going to be made about social, emotional, and academic needs, how that's being measured? And I'm not sure who would like to comment on that, but just how is that being measured as we're looking at data to determine return to school?
So Steve, would you want to talk about the academic pieces that we have in place?
For measuring the academic progress, looking at the high school level, what the quarterly failure rate was, knowing that quarter grades are not certified, they're not end-of-semester grades, but they are certainly an indication of where students currently are within their courses. Also, collecting information district-wide regarding on-track-for-graduation credits by grade levels. So looking at our freshmen through seniors with respect to how many credits they have and how many credits would be expected by the end of that year for that particular grade level, so that we can break that down further, not only by grade levels, but by schools, and then also looking at our particular demographic groups as well. So part of that is also connecting with their sites to centralize that process more compared to how it's been in the past. In particular, looking at making sure we're all pulling the same information from the same data sources. We are data-rich as a district, but that does mean at times we may have different conversations depending upon where that information's pulled. And I think that's also indicative of our conversation tonight as well. So part of that is also centralizing that process moving forward so that we can have that up-to-date information per quarter moving forward for all schools and making those common comparisons. So those are really, grades and credits are the two key features. We look at particularly for, at the high school level. Whereas with elementary, using our diagnostic platform of iReady, which I shared with you previously, knowing we have a winter window coming up as well. So we'll be able to make comparisons, true apple-to-apple comparisons from what I shared with you recently of the fall diagnostic to what the winter diagnostic would show with respect to math and reading, so that we can look at those major domains within both areas for grades 5K through eighth grade.
And then regarding the social, emotional learning, Polly, did you want to share on that topic, please?
Yes, absolutely. So a couple of pieces of information there that we tap into is, one, we do have our panorama data that we'll be looking at district-wide that has come back to us. We also have our wellness screen for the students at our high school level, as well as our third graders. Many of the, much of the data we look at really is coming through our SST meetings in terms of how many students have been showing up, how many students are truly engaged. Now, engage is a hard piece to measure, because we can look at, you know, how many are participating, but is it really closing the achievement gap? Are they making progress academically? But when you think about that, how many kids are showing up? How many kids are being vetted through an SST meeting along with our panorama or wellness screen? Those are the pieces that we look at, and those are how we determine our SAID groups and our counseling supports, those kind of pieces.
Can I just ask a follow-up question then? So there's, has there been a determination of need in those areas? That, I'm guessing there has been a determination of need, which is what is moving perhaps that piece of information above burden or trajectory at this point? Just trying to get an idea of how the decision-making process is working.
I could speak in terms of the social, emotional learning and the SAID groups that are taking part at elementary level and then our alternative education programs at the secondary level. Just really working through our student services team to say, which students have we not engaged with in a couple of weeks, a couple of months? Which students are we concerned about? Which ones have reached out to us personally to say, I'm struggling, or family members have reached out, or other students? So I think we really look at our alternative education and our SAID groups, just looking at who's not showing up either virtually. And when we can't reach out, when we've done porch visits, when we've tried to connect to the family, we haven't been successful. And so those are the students we're looking at, bringing in and continuing that engagement piece to see if in-person learning increases their ability to access supports.
Thank you.
There we go. I don't see any other hands raised. Is there anything else, Judy, or is that the end? If there are no further questions, we can go on to the Safe and Resilient Return report. Okay, so as you know, we are targeting January 19th as our start date for increased in-person learning. We have heard from some parents and community members who think this timeline is much too slow, and others who think this is much too fast. However, I think we all agree that we want to support this transition for our students and our staff in the best way possible. We're targeting January 19th for a number of We're targeting January 19th for a number of reasons. This date is a natural semester break in the school calendar, and it was originally published as a date for families to change between fully virtual hybrid models if desired. In addition, our medical advisors indicate that this return date would give a sufficient timeframe after the holidays to avoid a potential post-holiday surge in COVID-19 cases. Our principals and staff are actively preparing for this transition, working together to create classroom and school environments that are as safe as possible with consistent procedures for everyone. Our COVID leadership team and school site safety teams are also developing training and implementation, working together to create classroom and school environments that are as safe as possible. School site safety teams are also developing training and orientation videos for students, staff, and families using the most current scientific information and guidance to prevent transmission of the virus. We're in the process of hiring an additional contact tracer to support our nurses as we begin to bring more students on-site. In addition, comprehensive safety audits are scheduled during the first week of January at each one of our buildings across the district. And now I'll call on Greg Harches to give a little bit more information about those safety audits.
So prior to the first students entering our buildings this fall in September, our schools had mitigation strategies in place, and a lot of that work was done over the summer by nurses who led committees. We had, I think, a little over 20 committees. They looked at every part of a student's day. How do we keep, keep students and staff safe on buses as they enter the school building, as they walk the hallways, as they're in the lunchroom, in recess, in classrooms? And beyond that now, as we look to bring in possibly more students on January 20, January 19th, we have developed a 65-point checklist for our school personnel to use to ensure that the mitigation strategies outlined by the CDC are fully in place. And to that end, as Judy was mentioning, we are going to do safety audits. Where a member of the leadership team, a member of the facilities and operations staff will go through every building and go through this 65-point checklist to make sure that every piece is in place if we're going to bring more students back. Our facilities and operations staff has put a lot of time and energy into looking at how can we keep our students and staff safe? And there's been a lot of improvements over the last five months. We've learned a lot from other districts. We visited with Waukesha and Kenosha, two large districts, local districts here in terms of what mitigation strategies they are using. And our facilities and operations staff are ready to implement whatever we need them to, based on the model that we put into place. And so they have practiced what it will take to disinfect, if they have to disinfect before school, during the midday, after school, Wednesdays, Saturdays, they will be ready to mitigate, they will be ready to disinfect. We also continue to get better products. Up until last week, we were concerned about how are we going to disinfect, kind of hard to disinfect areas. And we're really pleased with a UV-disinfected one that we'll be able to use on different surfaces that can't use a spray and a wipe. Other districts have had success with students and staff assisting where some of your seventh through 12th graders are wiping down at the end of every period before they leave their spaces. So we have put a lot in place. We're excited about the 65-point checklist that we're going to go through the first week of January, just to make sure that if we are bringing more students back, more staff back, we're ready to do that safely.
And that is all we have at this time.
Okay, terrific. Well, thank you for the, for that report and the information. So moving on, then we would have business services report. Jim, that'd be you.
You're on mute, Jim.
Okay. I've got three items for you, all information items, so you won't be voting on any of them. A post-retirement benefits actuarial study was completed. The study is updated every two years. Study confirmed that the district's total OPED liability, that's other post-employment benefits, as of June 30, 2019, was a little over $22 million. One year later, the liability had been reduced to $15 million. By June 2021, the liability will increase slightly to $16 million. The significant reduction in liability is very good news for us. It reflects the benefits plan changes made to the post-retirement health insurance benefit in 2015. The projection does not include the cost of the defined contribution which took place in 2015. My second item is health insurance savings. Starting January 1, 2021, employees and retirees will be transitioning from our current health insurance carrier to NewGen. With NewGen, employers and retirees, employees and retirees choose from a broad network plan, WEA Trust, or a defined network plan called Health Tradition. Employees and retirees made their plan selection during the open enrollment period that closed October 30. Of the 1,726 employees and retirees who opted to access this insurance, 59% selected Health Traditions and 41% selected the WEA Trust Plan. The district will see a savings of $1.2 million from our budgeted amount, of which $320,000 will be shared back with those employees who selected Health Traditions through a reduction in their premium share. Half of the savings will go to our fiscal year for 2020, 2021. Additionally, 61 fewer employees and retirees will be carry, carrying district insurance in 2021 than in our current year, which will result in a savings of approximately $900,000, half of which will apply to this coming fiscal year. The total savings in health insurance costs will be applied to salary increases for the 2020, 21 fiscal year. And I'd like to emphasize that, a big reason why we're going to be able to give people a decent increase is because of the savings that have been come, come about through these health plan revisions. Item three is refinance of debt. The district has a principal balance of $6.5 million on a 2,500 referendum. This debt was refinanced in 2013. If interest rates are favorable, we hope to do it again. The savings might be $107,000. That's it, Kay.
Okay, any questions on that report? Okay, thanks, Jim. Then we will move on to board business. And first, election of Vice President due to Leah Olson's resignation. And Leah was our Vice President. We are, we need to fill that, that position. And we do have a policy that directs our election of officers, which Clara had included in the materials for tonight's meeting. And also just a reminder that one board member cannot simultaneously hold two offices. So I would open it up for nominations for Vice, Vice President. And I would like to nominate Barry O'Connor. What was that?
Do you have to second that?
They don't need to be seconded.
All right, Barry, you're in.
Well, are there any other nominations?
Is the person able to relinquish one office in favor of another?
We would, okay, so could we get some clarification from Attorney Strang on what would be the, the process?
If I understand the question correctly, there isn't a technical trap in being elected to a new office while you hold an existing office. So if you allow voting for someone to assume a new office, implicit in that vote is you are voting to have them relinquish the office they now hold. So there isn't a technicality, Deb, that prevents others who are officer from being candidates for what's under consideration right now. And I think that's where you're going with your question.
Right.
Okay. Does that answer your question, Kay?
Yes. And so then after a vote, if there would be a domino effect, then we would have a different position to fill.
That's correct.
Okay. I understand. So are there, are there any other, your hand is up, Deb.
I'd like to nominate myself for Vice President.
Okay. Are there any other nominations? Okay, I don't see any hands raised. Clara, are you prepared to do a, a Google poll vote?
Yeah, I think Clara's having some tech, technical difficulties right now.
Okay, well, short of that, so the only thing a board can do in secret is to vote for officers. So this would be when we could do that. And Clara is back, it appears on my screen. Clara, are you back? Or I could suggest that we move on to other business and circle back. I know I'd be breaking the, the order of the agenda. I don't know if you're prepared, Matt, to do a, a Google poll vote. I know that Clara had, we had, I believe she's.
Fine with me, Kay, to break off and come back to it.
Yeah.
Okay.
He's not back at this time.
He's not back. So Attorney Strang, is there any problem if we change this because of some technical difficulties? We move on to our agenda and then circle back?
Sorry, I'm unplugging my mute button periodically so that there's no noise from here to there. Really what you're doing in this situation is you're postponing consideration of something that ordinarily would require a motion that someone moved to postpone this matter until a later point in the meeting. It does require a second. It is debatable. It is amendable, so it kind of has the characteristics of an ordinary motion. So if you have a motion to that effect on the second, you can then vote to postpone it to a later time in the meeting.
Okay, so.
Motion, we move it to a later time in the meeting.
Jessica?
Okay, any discussion on that motion? I don't see any hands raised, so I will just do roll call. Deb Truman?
I.
Jim Bowman?
I.
Mary Yonkey?
I.
Barry O'Connor?
I.
Chris Soder?
I.
And Kay Egert? Let me say I. Okay. So we're going to move on and we'll get back to this. So next up is the Safe and Resilient Return Framework Board Member Review and Discussion of the Learning Model Revaluation Matrix. And I'm going to turn this over to you, Deb. This was a request to bring, bring this forward.
Clara had, I, I had some beginning thoughts that I put on a PowerPoint, and she had that. I'm looking in my email to see if I can find that to pull it up, but that wouldn't help, because I can't share my screen. Let's see.
If you send me the email, I'd be able to share it.
Okay, I'm looking for it now. Oh, boy. On my calendar.
I can send it. I have it.
You have it? Okay.
I do.
I am just not able to locate it right now. Maybe this is it. Nope.
Okay, Matt, it should be on its way.
Thank you.
Okay. So, okay. This, this is, again, like I said, just initial thoughts, putting it together, and it's definitely open for discussion. But when Barry was talking before about what is our matrix, since we set that on August 12th, and I believe it was amended on September 28th, as Greg had mentioned before, what we had was the burden and trajectory. We've subsequently had more than 90% of our students relying on virtual instruction for nine months since last March. And knowing that we've, not all students are thriving in this. I'm so glad some are, but not all are. I, I believe that it'd be important to revisit this, because we're not providing the choice for, a choice in education. So Clara, could you go down to the next? This is, I put this out, and I know, Jim, you had thoughts on this article, how he sends a message to Wisconsin schools. So Clara, could you move on to the next slide, please? I thought this was important to realize that in-person classes should be the default position. It's, the transmission among kids is not very big at all, like no one would have suspected. Let's try to get the kids back. Next slide, please, Clara. Here we have another piece of information, and again, science, but it's science, it's one side of science. Okay. What I liked about this part is that schools could help keep students safe by isolating them in small groups, separating desks with plexiglass, requiring masks. And parents should still be given an online option. Okay, next slide, please, Clara. These are my, I guess these are my starting points for this. Right now, we have the primary criteria of the CDC, which includes Appleton and the tri-county area COVID number cases. What I'm, what I'm like, would like to see is have our primary criteria as the ability to implement five key mitigation strategies. And as Greg talked, these have been fully in-person for several months. They have their 65-point. I'm, maybe I should just go through this, and then we'll come back to it if needs be. So the ability to implement the strategies, it's important to have our staffing needs. And then have our decisions guided by the following questions. Do the conditions exist in our schools that provide a learning environment for students? Where, when all safety precautions are taken, the risk for COVID-19, I'm sorry, I've got a typo, remain low? Do the conditions that exist in our schools provide a working environment for our employees where all safety precautions are taken? The risk of, for the, yeah, the risk for the transmission, I'm sorry, transmission of COVID-19 remain low? And does the presence of staff and students in schools exacerbate the spread of virus in our community? So I apologize for those, those errors in the spelling there, but it's the risk. those errors in the spelling there, but it's the risk for the spread of the COVID-19. Okay, next slide, please. And as secondary criteria, the number of new cases within the last 14 days in city and the number of new cases in the tri-county region. Okay, next slide, please. Oh, never mind, we can skip this one. This, yeah, so if we go back up one. And that's, that's what I'm, as a starting point for discussion, that's what I have for you. As I mentioned, that statement, a negative COVID test is not the only measure of health. And I believe it's important at this time to start taking into consideration that we do have academic needs, we do have engagement needs of the students being on the Chromebook. And this doesn't mean everybody goes back to school. It's just somehow can we provide a choice for those students and families who best feel they need that choice? So that's, I don't think, open it up at this time for discussion.
So for clarification, so I got some feedback. What you would be suggesting is instead of having the burden and trajectory as some of the primary factors, you would move those down to secondary, is that?
I would, I would because this was mentioned by Barry, Minnesota has, there's that 600. It, it, it's an arbitrary number. I think it comes back down to what do we value? Do we value the fact that kids are in school and, and kids and staff are in school and being safe? Or do we value the fact that we're probably never going to get the kids back in school if we keep using that city, the city data? Which in itself can be argued.
So I, I guess I'd like to add some thoughts.
I'd appreciate it, like I said, this was just my starting point.
Sure, so, you know, going back when the first CDC guidelines came out, just think of what else was known about the virus. There wasn't a lot, I think that was still the point that we were told to quarantine our groceries. We were told, don't wear masks, and then eventually, wear masks to protect other people. And now, oh, wear masks to protect yourself. So, just what we have learned about the virus. I mean, I think what the criteria to, to evaluate how best to serve students, those criteria have developed as well. And that's when the CDC added mitigation strategies. As those have been determined, you know, the virus is, is airborne and masking and these other things do help. So when the CDC came out with this guidance, they provided guidelines, but yet stopped short of telling us how to apply the guidelines. So, um, you know, I believe that the matrix that we have does give us the, uh, the needed flexibility. We're, we're trying to balance. We're trying to balance an equation with, with a lot of factors and not all the factors are equal. So I, I see that as we have tried, as we are getting more students back in school. And it's not a direct, if the burden is at a particular amount, we've already backed off on that, you know, in a large regard because we have this addition of mitigation strategies. I think it's still important that we would need to keep an eye on what the, what the burden and the trajectory are in the community. And I, I personally wouldn't eliminate those completely from, from the matrix. And I think that we, the current matrix, I think it's, we still end up needing to apply judgment and evaluate on how things are doing and how things are doing in the community. I think it needs to be, I think it needs to be somewhat fluid. So that, that's just some of my thoughts. Jim, your hand is up.
I, I, I believe that burden should stay as a primary criteria, but not the only one. The, the quote that was provided for Dr. Fauci does accurately state one of the two positions that he stated in the, in the TV show that the interviewer rec, referenced, and that was ABC's This Week on Sunday, November 29. So his point that schools need to reopen and how do you make that happen, that, that's correct. But he made a second point that, that wasn't listed. And, and here is the verbatim what he said. "The best way to ensure the safety of the children in school is to get the community level of spread low. So if you mitigate the things that you know are causing spread in a very, very profound way, in a robust way, if you bring that down, you will then indirectly and ultimately protect the children in the schools because the community level is determined by how things go across the board." So my feeling would be the same thing. So when we look at Fauci, I think we need to look at both of his points. He does want to bring kids back to school. He does agree that schools are not super spreaders. And he believes that a condition for that, for bringing the kids back is to get the community level of infections down.
Uh, Gary.
But of course, one of the challenges with those kinds of statements, Jim, is that he doesn't give any numbers. So the fact of the matter is, the burden rate has gone down in tri-county and Appleton. And so you could, you know, latch onto that and run with it, so to speak. I think this district has taken a very calculated and measured approach through this whole pandemic. And maybe not as fast as some people want us to go, but we're taking a calculated and measured approach, and that's important. And we're weighing all those things that Greg, you know, had listed, right? And the fact that we're voting on an in-person model or two different options tonight is indicative of that, right? So, and you can vote no for it too. But I think it's in front of us, and tonight's one of the nights it is in front of us, you know, whether we go back in person and how we do that. And I think that's positive, Deb, and I, I think that speaks to, uh, you know, what you're trying to point out, Deb, is that make sure that we're factoring in. And it does become very philosophical at some point because we can sit here, I mean, gee, that one Harper document was 172 pages of research, you know, that we could sift through if we wanted to, right? And so that's not going to be the answer. It's, the answer is going to be to continue to take this calculated, measured approach and weigh all these different factors in. And do the best we can, you know, another statement that's made is that there's no clear direction at any state level, at any federal level, this is all in front of us. And so we're charged with, you know, figuring that out, and that's what we're going to keep doing.
Uh, Deb?
Thank you, Gary, for, for those comments. I'm not always the most eloquent speaker. However, I just really believe, like you said, at this point, it comes down to what do we value? Do we value, are we going to hang our hat on saying, wow, we got our numbers down to less than 10, now we can finally put all the kids back in school? Or are we going to value the fact that we are moving some back? We've got a data tracker, we've got the mitigation factors into place. We are following some of the CDC guidelines, but just remember, those are guidelines, those are not firm fact numbers. And as students go back to school, we may see a decrease in the community spread because they're not being shuttled back and forth on buses to different places, hanging out with different students all the time. What do we value? Do we value sheltering in place? Or do we value the social, emotional, mental, academic health of our students and our families? They have given us a lot for the last nine months. And I think that's why we need to really do some serious consideration of realigning those. I particularly like those questions, Clara, those were on the second to last slide. If we can put kids back in school and, and not, we won't know until we try. Do the conditions exist in our schools that provide a learning environment when all safety precautions are taken that reduce the risk of COVID-19? I think we have that answer. Do conditions exist in our schools that provide a working environment for our employees? Well, if they're safe for the students, wouldn't they be safe for that employ, for the employees? That takes care of staffing. And does the presence, if it, if it starts to exacerbate, exacerbate the spread of the virus, then you start using your contact tracers and start, and start closing classrooms or something. We need to give this a chance. We've done it the numbers way for nine months. I know there's a vaccine coming, Lord knows when. Do we wait? Do we owe it to our students to follow these questions? Implement the strategies? And get, and, and start moving, start moving forward. We have had many, many families, hundreds of students have pulled out of our district this year since September because we have been very, very, I'll say cautious in implementing our matrix. I believe it's time for a change and I, again, this is, this is just my thoughts, this is discussion, but I don't think that those CDC numbers and the DA, and the DHS numbers should be our be all end all. With these other conditions.
I'm sorry. Chris?
Deb, I just have a question, is it, are you looking to change the weight given to burden and trajectory? Are you, or are you looking to eliminate that piece?
I'm not looking to eliminate it. However, I think the other factors are more important. But again, as Barry mentioned, in Minnesota, the number is 600. If we put our number at 600, or let's, let's say we put our number at 800, we'd go back, what, tomorrow? No, I mean, we're, the number is arbitrary. As Kay said, the science has changed. I, I don't hold strong and fast to that number. If we ever want to give our students a chance at getting the education they deserve in this district before more leave.
And I, I think all of us, and I will speak for myself, want students back in school. But I also think we have an obligation to our community as well, our community as a whole. And the, the burden and trajectory piece are important. I, I guess I'm just trying to figure out in your resolution, like how, how will that change? You're, you're saying, take the burden and the trajectory and move that to a secondary level.
Every, yes, every, every district has the burden and trajectory, Greg mentioned that, they all do. I've looked on them, they, they all do, they all have the CDC numbers, they've got the DHS numbers. But they use them as guidelines, not as firm cutoffs. I, I would propose, and again, all we can do, because in the end, I think all we can do is make a recommendation to the leadership team to make changes to the matrix. I would like to recommend that we shift our priorities from the numbers to the students. As a school board member, I feel an obligation to the students and the parents and the staff. We can't change, we can encourage the community. We can't enforce putting masks on them. We can put the kids back in school and ensure that they're safe in school. I just lost my train of thought. Does that help answer your question? I'm not saying eliminate it, but just move it to the background, use it more as a guideline.
Can I ask one more question then? What would you say to individuals who look at the current cases of COVID and the quarantine numbers with what is essentially a small group of students in school and/or, or in those extracurricular activities? How would you sort of quell their, their concerns about those numbers? Because I, I guess I was surprised when I saw the number on the co-curriculars with a small number of students and the numbers that are already and have been in quarantine or have tested positive. I, I guess I'm just wondering, how would you respond then to the, to someone who is concerned about that and as well as in some of the schools?
Well, what I would say is that I think we have a lot more control on mitigation practices in the schools with the students and the staff. The 65-point checklist, the information that the staff will be getting as far as this, the, the, the plans, you know, students must wear their masks at all time. You're going to stay more to the front of the classroom when you teach. All those pieces are in educate, that are in education are not in the extracurriculars. So I guess that would be my answer to that. And even with the small amount of students that are in school, school now, those are probably the more needy students. You could, you could, I mean, conceivably, you could put another 10,000 students back in school and have, and have, um, similar numbers. Because like I said, the students that are in school now are those that may not be able to wear a mask. They may, they may have more learning challenges that isn't allowing them to be as COVID-safe as we might be. Is, is that a fair statement? I mean, Holly, I'm going to look to you a little bit. Are the students that are in school now, would they tend to be more at risk for being able to follow the safety protocols?
I would say to your point, Deb, yeah, we do have students that are currently in school that are working on mask tolerance and getting masks on. And that have some needs that make social distancing difficult.
Does that answer your question, Chris?
Yep, I just, thank you.
I, I mean, I just, that's, that's how I see it in my mind.
Uh, Barry?
Yeah, I, you know, I kind of, Deb, I kind of agree with you on some things. The, uh, the Minnesota rate is actually 500, which they adjusted, the CDC thing. But that's for just the young kids going into school on a hybrid. High school and middle school are still virtual at that level. And then once it hits 300, then they're both hybrid. And from under 200, then it becomes elementary in, in, in person, I think, five days. And, uh, middle school and high school in hybrid, I believe, still. And then 100 is where they go in full across the board. And there's some science behind that, and, and that's why the CDC differentiates between young kids and older kids. And there's some good research that shows that young kids, in fact, there was just a study in, in Utah that's very interesting because Salt Lake City is all virtual, but the suburbs are not, or have not been. And so they were able to compare the rates of infection between, uh, kids in the different districts. And it's kind of a nice little experiment, not full, not entirely foolproof or anything. But nevertheless, they found that the elementary kids have the same infection rate in both settings. Whereas the high school kids had a much higher rate in the, uh, in the, uh, in-school programs and, uh, in the in-school suburbs and stuff. And so, and then they also found in some of the schools that when they, uh, went back to virtual, the rates dropped in the community. And in fact, kind of a study in, in Appleton, I compared Appleton, city of Appleton numbers without a gaming county, not the tri-county. But over the, since this began over the last months, many months, Appleton's been about 10 to 30% lower in terms of infection rates in the community, which begs the question. Which begs the question, you know, that may not be maybe just coincidental. And that's Barry's research, which is hardly, you know, the gold standard. But nevertheless, it raises the question, you know, we've been, you know, we've been in hyper and virtual for quite a while. Has it impacted our community's spread? And so the the issue with community spread is just not only are we contributing to it as a school district when you put 15,000 kids together? And and if we did, we wouldn't be able to mitigate very well because we don't have the space to do it. But in in elementary, in smaller numbers, hybrid, that's the whole basis for it. So there's a logic behind it. And, uh, you know, I think that personally, the 200 and 300 is kind of probably uh a little too restrictive. But I just can't give it the blank check in my mind that says that it's irrelevant. What kind of spreads going on in your community? I don't think anybody believes that. That's a true epidemiologist in the world. You know, when you talk about European countries doing well, they shut their bars and they shut their restaurants. And when their rates start to climb again, they shut the bars and they shut the restaurants and they compensated the owners. Which is what we we aren't willing to do in this country, but we're not asking people to go bankrupt. We hope. But they valued the schools. They kept the schools open. And that's what you keep reading about, but their rates were so low, they were meeting these guidelines. And that's why they did it that way. So I'm, I I think we can, I just don't want to blank check where we're making excuses for going going into school when we've got a vaccine in two or three months is going to be making a big difference. You know, and and how many, how many kids might get sick? Not very many. Not very serious sicknesses. I get that. But what happens in the community and the hospitals? And the uh, the teachers? And and we do have to be concerned about our staff. We're talking about how great they are. And how the parents love them and they're and they're appreciating them. But we're gonna, we're not, we ought to kind of reciprocate for the safe environment. And I'd like to know just how many we've we've received, I meant to ask this earlier, we've received lots of emails that describe very, very difficult situations at home with kids. Very unhappy kids and very struggling kids. And I just wonder, you know, the the survey seemed to say that so many parents were kind of pleased with what's going on. Is that widespread? I mean, do we have a third of our population absolutely in tears every day? Uh with virtual? I I have no sense of it. Because, you know, we've received that information from you know, 10 or 15 frequent writers and so on. And that's, that's, you know, it's heart-wrenching. But it's not something you drive the entire school district on. You try and figure out what you can do in those cases. Try and, or try and work out a solution. I've become a believer in co-curriculars. Ben will be happy to hear this. Uh, because the uh uh, you know, the co-curricular is originally, you know, whereas a spreading event, the fact that we don't have spectators is big. Because it's very hard to control those crowds. You know, they may, you can tell them to wear masks and distance, but but they're social. They want to talk to each other. And uh, and they, they, you know, they've been with their kids' teams for 10 years, so they're all want to socialize while they're there. And the kids, when I watch the videos, I like watching the streaming, they're keeping their masks on. But I noticed one, it wasn't our conference, it wasn't our kids. Kid kept taking his mask down. He'd have a conference on the sideline with the coach in the middle of the game. He had his mask off. It goes right back in and plays. He was a good basketball player. All right? And and if we're going to do it, mitigation strategies means that kid's sitting. And if he's not getting messaged, then he's off the team. But the problem with high school kids, and this came up in the Utah study, the reason they think the Utah kids had a higher rate was not because the school mitigation was was a disaster. The school mitigation was pretty good. But what happens is the kids at high school levels go out and they're they're independent adults almost. So they go out and they, it's not like a little kid who gets picked up by his parents out of elementary school. It's a high school kid who goes in the car and and carpools with five of his friends. Because he doesn't want to walk home, doesn't take the bus, and he doesn't wear his mask because that's not cool. So, I mean, that's, that's the dynamic that drives it. That's what they figured in the Utah situation.
Hey Barry, you mentioned co-curriculars and Chris, you mentioned it too. I just want to clarify. So we've had, and I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, Polly, but five positive cases from students uh who are taking part in a co-curricular currently, which means outside the school day. We have somewhere between probably 700 and 1,000 kids uh at the high school level who are currently taking part in a co-curricular where they're coming to school um even once in a while. And then what happened with one of those cases, it was one student happened to be, take part uh in a game was asymptomatic. Um, and then a couple of days later tested positive. And because of that, I believe it was about 20 students that went into quarantine. So just to give you a little bit more um little bit more of a parameter on how those numbers that you shared or that were shared with you tonight.
And Ben, the other, the other thing I would just add to this Utah study was the reason they thought co-curriculars worked was because the kids realized that if they got COVID or if it spread, they were going to lose their opportunity. And that's not quite the same with general schooling. All of us who've dealt with co-curricular codes and stuff like that know that they help motivate kids to appropriate. And and wearing a mask and and not wanting to infect your teammates is a pretty powerful driver, which isn't present in non-co-curriculars.
No, it is. And and correct me if I'm wrong, Polly, but I believe the five positives, none of those happened with inside the school. Those those were students that had it and brought it into the school.
Uh, that's correct then.
Okay. And this is week five. And uh along with Barry, I think a lot of us probably have been watching some. And I've, I've gone to some of the games actually just to see firsthand. And as you said, Barry, the students and and it's not just sports, but we had um you know, North High School with their one act play recently won their 22nd uh state award. Uh those students who were students who were coming onto school grounds a little bit because they needed to use the green screen and some other pieces um so that they could, so that they could take part in what they, what they're passionate about. But um, yeah, just a little bit more information about the co-curriculars.
Okay, so what I'm, what I'm hearing is that it sounds, it sounds like most of us agree we could revisit the matrix. Is that fair enough to say? I guess then the
I wouldn't speak for everybody.
No, I, that's what I'm
You and I have talked so far and, you know, and and I may, others may not agree with us. And revisiting it, I think we need to reinstitute it because I don't think it's being, I don't think it has any weight. I mean, that's my fear.
I'm not sure what you're saying.
I'm not sure. It's being, I I think your policy suggestion is probably already active in terms of how some decisions have been made. Because it is kind of a in uh nonspecific on how things are weighted. So I'm saying it'd be good to get some specificity on that from a board point of view. So we're not defending things we can't defend.
Right. So knowing that um, I guess what I'm wondering is how do we go about that? Do we do we convene a special board meeting to revisit that? Um Okay, I'll ask you to speak now if you, if you don't think this should be revisited because the 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 agenda item says review and discussion. So we reviewed and we discussed. Um, I would like to make a recommendation to the administrative, to the leadership team, and I'm not saying I have all the answers right now. But I would like us to to get some answers and make a recommendation to them with our new cutoff numbers or whatever they be. Um, Kay, any suggestions on how we do that?
Um, well, just a couple of things. First of all, the the matrix um that is being used right now, that was not a a board tool that was um administration came up with that and shared. And it was um when we talked about the addendum on how we would evaluate, administration would evaluate moving between models. The first point, uh number one, I believe, was just information about um the pandemic itself, excuse me, pandemic itself regarding the epidemiology and those sorts of things. And so then this matrix became a way to try to quantify um that point number one. And so um and I I think it has served as as guidance, but it, you know, when we added the the uh CDC mitigation strategies, I mean, it's not those are the things that we're looking at, but it's, you know, it's not black and white. When you hit this point, this is what happens. There is number of different factors which are considered and is, you know, so um I, you know, I, as far as, I I guess, are you looking for, and Barry, I mean, are board members looking for these um concrete cutoffs that would stimulate? Because I think some of these things, quite honestly, are just really difficult to define. I mean, and then you're going to add in things like um students that aren't um thriving or even um doing well at all. And so then, is that going to weigh more than something else? I, I I, just as an individual, I personally think that a discussion about this and what, what does it mean and how is the um administration applying it is is meaningful. I just don't know how the board would come up with uh these very specific thresholds. And that is what would stimulate moving from this model to that model. I go back to, it's, it's, it's there's a lot of gray. There's always new information that's coming out and in the end, it's um it's evaluating and it's judgment, but staying focused on what are those things that we are considering? So um
Okay, and I'm looking at, I think it's the um part of the um addendum that says the board approved the district framework as well of, as well as the objective criteria. The board also authorized administration authority to transition between models as necessary. This authority did not relinquish the board's authority to request review of or changes to the decision-making criteria. And that's where I'm coming up with this. We did not relinquish our authority to request review of or changes to. We can request changes to the decision-making criteria.
And so I'll just, Deb, if I could just clarify too, that the addendum itself is what was approved and that contains the criteria. So that statement that you read, you know, really would at this point in time require the board to take a look at that addendum and to see if there is something there that needs to be added or or clarified. Um So you didn't really approve the matrix, um but you approved the criteria and there were many factors and you know, Kirk helped us develop that in such a way that we were um, that is many of 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 the factors that could potentially help us make these really tough decisions were were stated in such a way that there was some discretion, but also that it called out the really important factors that boards of education need to consider.
There you go. Thank you, Clara. Scroll down a little bit and then I think that's where the five different criteria. So I, I guess back to, I'm not exactly sure what you are looking for, because the matrix the board did not approve the matrix. If you are thinking that the board needs to set benchmarks, is that what you
Um, you know, Kay, this was from a November 4th meeting. Um, a statement, this statement was read and then I subsequently asked to have it sent to me. So that's what I'm reading from.
Yeah, that, that I think is from the August 12th board meeting or August, early August.
November 4th is when, when it was shared at a meeting.
I, yes, and that comes from um August.
The 12th.
When the decision, when these um criteria were approved by the board. These were the criteria that attorney string helped us um identify. These would be the criteria that would be used in determining whether or not um administration would want to switch between educational models. We approved the framework, which was that, you know, one end fully virtual to other end fully in person and then the hybrid in the middle. We approved that framework. The matrix was a tool then that was used to try to um quantify some of the criteria for making those changes within that framework. Someone else can jump in and help explain it.
This, this is, yeah, it's, it's tricky. But according to this statement that I have here, it said, the board has the authority to request review of or changes to the decision-making criteria. Which is, is the, is the um reevaluation matrix, isn't it? What, what is the criteria? Right now, our criteria is what we shared before.
I'm sorry, Clara has it screen shared. Clara, can you just continue to scroll down a little bit? So you'll see these five different areas. The first one is now hidden online, but so it's the COVID-19 itself, the legal requirements, results produced by or under district policy, technology considerations, and then conservation and effective use of resources. Matrix, you know, where the CDC, where the burden and the trajectory and that, that is, was a more of an administrate, I mean, the administration came up with that as a, as a tool to help quantify and to help show the public or, you know, just to to try to um be transparent. This is how we are but just for one of those, one of these areas, and it was the first one that's now hidden, top one on this list. So if you are talking about, you want to go back and talk about these criteria, then
Yes.
This is what was board approved. The board did not approve the matrix. The board approved these criteria.
Criteria, yes. Then that, yes. I would make the changes to the decision-making criteria. Or, yes. How? Because
Oh, go ahead. Now, tonight, tonight, we are also talking about the model. And that, that's for the primary discussion or will be.
And that's the next agenda item.
Yeah, okay. I see this, that's a different agenda item.
It's adding something to the framework, potentially.
Yes.
Um, well, so um I've lost my list of participants. I'm not sure if other board members have hands raised that they would like to.
No. On tails.
Um, I, I mean, I'll speak for myself. I personally do not see a reason to change the criteria. I think they are good criteria. I think, you know, it's covers the bases. These are things that we would want to consider if we are evaluating um what sort of, you know, what is the best educational um model for students to use? I, I just personally, I think we need to, we need to maintain um So I think that we need to maintain the the burden and the trajectory, but um. Given that um Kirk is here with us. Kirk, would you weigh in on procedurally? Do you see a way to wrap up this discussion? Or I think you've heard enough of. Um what? Some board members have expressed.
Sure, I think there's some of the discussion is rather fluid and so it does cover more than one subject. But uh to the extent that the discussion is about a matter that came before the board. Uh in a prior situation, uh including uh tonight, uh when you've taken a vote this evening. Uh I think Board Policy one eighty-one is uh probably the applicable guidance that the board has given itself and. And there with respect to voting, uh the policy states. Uh that a motion once voted upon and whether defeated or adopted. Cannot be reconsidered at the same meeting or the next meeting without the approval of a motion to reconsider by a majority of. The members of the board. Now, if you have a situation where you're at a subsequent meeting, not the same meeting and not the immediately. Uh a subsequent meeting. Uh the policy also states that at subsequent meetings, reconsideration of a motion previously passed by the board. Can be initiated by any school board member, provided that it is properly noticed through the agenda setting protocol. Uh involving the board president and superintendent. So. If, and I I I'm not sure of this, so of course I would look to you for guidance on the substance of this, but. Uh if the question being kicked around is, can we return to this thing that we've already voted upon before? Um at this meeting or another meeting, uh or at the meeting you originally voted on it in a subsequent meeting. That would have to be by motion to reconsider. If it's at a later time, however, a board member. Uh can raise the issue without having to go through the reconsideration process, uh according to Board Policy one eighty-one. But that doesn't mean there are no requirements at all. It still has to be properly noticed and placed on the agenda through your ordinary. Uh agenda setting procedure. And the board, of course, um probably has customs relating to. Uh how the board discusses as a board, uh placing something on a future agenda, but I just wanted to draw your attention. Uh to that policy, because of course, if you're reconsidering something you just did, you've got to have that. Uh if you will, waiting period where motions to reconsider are the only manner that your policy permits you to re. Uh consider the issue. After that, it becomes a matter for any board member to raise and follow the usual. Uh process for getting something on a board agenda in the future. I think that's probably the closest guidance. Uh you've given yourself on this issue. I did take a look while you were talking at Board Policy one eighty-nine regarding. A holding of virtual meetings, but uh that seems to be related primarily to emergency situations and. Has to do more with issues of whether or not certain subjects can be considered appropriately. At virtual meetings as opposed to other meetings. So uh there's some language uh in the additional statement section at subsection. Six that at least tangentially relates a little bit to this kind of situation, but I don't think it's applicable. So I think your uh best guidance is in your own policy, which dictates that uh matters you've decided before. Uh that you have to go through the normal agenda setting process to determine whether or not they're going to come back to the board. Whatever that process traditionally may be.
Okay.
I would say, Kay, at this at this board meeting, I don't know that there's a consensus or or and depth that. But people feel good about terms of making a decision on this, so I think we postpone that. And pick it up in January, but again, we're moving toward. In school. Students in school. So the question is, is, you know, it will be if if things continue in the trend they're in now. It won't be a question probably, but if it doesn't. And there's a surge after Christmas, then we're gonna beg the question, aren't we? Maybe not. So at that.
I'll put it on, I'll ask for it to be an agenda item on the next meeting then. Thank you.
Maybe move ahead with the other topic.
Yeah, and if I may, just to answer the other implied question that I think Deb had at one point, Deb, you mentioned a special meeting. The policy I referenced is non-specific as to that, so I think that. Uh what you just said about having it put on the next regular agenda, uh you can make that request. I think you also. Uh can make the request that a special meeting take place for that purpose.
Okay, um. Clara is back and so I, we we'll move on and if we can circle back to five A. Uh Clara is back.
I am, I am so sorry, everyone. Uh those secret ballots have been sent to your district emails. So uh keep in mind, they may have gone. If your email separates into. Two different inboxes, a priority inbox and another inbox, it's likely in the other inbox, so please check that as well. If you have not already filled out the form, please do so and return those. And to clarify, those only would have gone to board members.
Okay. Are we going to wait for this or should we?
I haven't found it yet.
Oh, okay. We'll let everyone.
Here we go, found it, sorry. Sorry.
Okay, so Clara, are you?
Like magic.
Yep, I have all of the responses. One second, uh did you want me to share it on my screen?
Sure.
Okay. Did you want me to share it on my screen?
Sure. Okay, so.
Two votes for Deb Truman and four votes for Barry O'Connor.
Okay. Okay, thank you. So now I do need to ask you, um Barry, will you um serve as? Are you willing to serve?
Yes, thank you, thank you.
And although we voted um secretly, do we, uh we. Kirk, do we have to, I mean, we voted by secret ballot? And but is there any obligation to preserve that? Those ballots or can we just reflect that the um? The outcome of the vote?
Uh what you're doing right now is sufficient for the meeting, uh because the vote can be taken by secret ballot. However. The ballots themselves are public records and therefore have to be retained. So Clara should make sure that she retains. That information so uh that we're following our record retention policy in that regard.
Okay. Okay, thank you. All right, um so now let's move on to uh five C potential updates to the safe and resilient framework.
Okay, there's, do you have to, Kirk? There is no need to do the secretary over again, because it.
No, because.
It wasn't the prior resignation and now you have to.
No, right.
Just continue, Scott.
Thank you. Or clerk, Deb is serves as the clerk. Okay, so can we move on to five C?
Let's see.
Judy, are you gonna lead this or? We had the presentation on the potential updates.
Right, so um this this is the question about adding uh the interim hybrid option. To the framework. And so we would be looking for um a motion by a member to. Add either option one or option two to our safe and resilient framework.
Jim Bowman, I move approval of option one.
Very, I second that, so we can discuss it.
Okay. All right, discussion, option one, which is uh the AMPM interim. Model. Go, Barry.
My question of the administration leadership team is, uh what do they, what do they prefer? Based on their. You know, meeting with faculty and parents and planning and so on. I I think I know, but I'm not certain and I and that. And after all the discussion and questions, I mean, are, is there still a favorite? Do we approve both and let you make your choice?
Yeah, I can certainly represent what the work group um is recommending and it's very similar. Our conversations are very similar to. What you're having about all the criteria. There's so many different factors that had to go into um the recommendation. And there's, as you heard from our principals tonight, there's pros and cons. Safety, instruction, um definitely the AMPM knocks it out of the park. It's it's much stronger for our youngest learners. And we really like the opportunity to build up there, um to work with our youngest learners with those mitigation strategies to teach and reteach. Um but the family impact is certainly something that was weighted and uh we certainly had felt right from the beginning that our partnership. With the YMC and the Boys and Girls Club would be assistance to families to work through that. Um certainly, there are some reservations. Of families, we know that, we hear that. Um in working with the Y and the Boys and Girls Club, they do feel um that they'll be able to meet. Family needs and this is designed to be an interim model because our end goal is to have our students back full time. But I appreciate the dialogue with the board, uh because just like we waited it, I see that you're doing the same thing and looking at all the criteria.
Uh and I have a couple of questions. Oh, sorry. Deb, you and Gary, go ahead. I I didn't mean to butt in. Debbie, you wanna go?
Okay, um thank you, Gary. Thank you, Barry. Um. What if we, so how is this all going to look? Are we going to vote for option one, option two, or? Option three? Exactly, how is this going to look? Because Jim moved to vote for option one and what's it gonna look like after all is said and done?
Well, there's a motion and a second for option one and that would need to be um dealt with first. If that. Passes and that would be it. If it doesn't, then there would be, there could be an option two. Um option three is not listed. Option three has already been approved. Option three is essentially part of what. Was approved in July. This is just adding an option and these are, you know, considered interim. A step before option three is maybe, is that an affair? Fair assessment?
I don't know if that makes sense to me, Kay. I thought we were voting on either. Option one and two or keeping option three. In other words, if we vote yes, does that mean on January nineteenth? That's the option that's gonna be invoked, so to speak. I was of the understanding that option three was still in play as saying, that's the one we like. Forget these other two. And that sounds now like maybe that's not the case.
So you could vote down both. So there, if there's a motion, which we have for option one, and that is voted down. And then if there's a motion for option two and that is voted down, then the default would be the current. Matrix, or excuse me, the current framework, hybrid.
Which would be kindergarten through fourth grade, coming back full time, fully in person. And fifth and sixth grade coming back on an AABB schedule.
It would've been nice to have it on the item for consideration as an option, not listed.
Great. So to follow on that, um. Nan, the um but on the nineteenth, right now, it's would be that. The seventh through twelfth graders would come back AABB.
Yes.
So option three really. Option two um includes the um.
Option three was full in person. Five eight through six, yeah, that's.
The second option was AABB for K through six. Hybrid.
Right, and option three would be take out the K four and they are fully in person.
But would option one be ABAB? K six?
Option one was the AMPM.
Right, and that would be K six?
Correct.
Okay.
Five K.
Option two is AABB, K six, option three, which means five, six are. AABB, I mean, I, it's, um, one of my questions is, um. I think I know, slide seven, three weeks for a school-wide. Three weeks to learn the school-wide routines. Um how did, why three weeks? A lot of these kids are used to wearing masks at their um daycare programs. Why three weeks?
Multiple things Deb came into that discussion, um including, you know, the amount of time it took us with classroom connections to get. Into the routine and learn those strategies. We also wanted to um utilize the COVID tracker and make sure that. The metrics stayed at appropriate level. And that our mitigation strategies are working. It it's really that that phase in um layering in that we have been doing from the beginning.
Okay, um, let's see, I had. Slide twenty-two, oh, we talked about teacher workload already. There was a part in there that said there were two hundred twelve respondents to the survey. Was that um all the teachers in all the elementary buildings? Is that all that responded?
We sent out the survey to all elementary staff, so it's about twenty percent of our parents and our educators that responded.
Okay, so there's eighty percent that didn't. Okay. Uh which is interesting. I mean, I I think that's interesting to note. Um, let me see. We had, let's see. Okay, that that took care of my questions. Thank you.
Uh Barry.
Barry, you're muted.
Or what you. There we go. The, do we know the percent of parents at this point who want to stay in virtual? Approximately?
Yes, um we have approximately fifteen to twenty percent of our student, elementary student body that is in enrolled in elementary virtual school, EVS.
But now they've had a chance to choose for the coming semester. Is that the number that you came with?
No, um that that's currently, um and really, it's pretty much a wash. Um we had three hundred and eleven. Uh applications processed by attendance and enrollment. We had 311 applications processed by attendance and enrollment. And that's by the window and then, like I said, we, we continue to process afterwards, but we needed to set a deadline to look at staffing. So we had eight families pull their applications. And so out of that 303 applications that were processed, 158 requested at semester to move from EVS into in-person or in-person from one school to in-person to another. Because school of choices, you know, it's all schools. So, but the majority of those were from virtual to in-person. But we also had our 145 requests to move from in-person to EVS. So again, it's, it, as in all of this, it has been kind of a wash. But so we're not seeing a drastic move either way.
Okay, and when a parent goes back, I think Deb asked this earlier, when a parent chooses at this point, if they're in a charter school or a neighborhood school and they want to go virtual, do they lose their places in those schools?
No, they don't. They're duly enrolled.
Okay, so even if they're in EVS?
Correct. So if I'm a Horizon student, I'm, I'm enrolled in EVS, but I still, I mean, that's my secondary enrollment. My primary enrollment is still with Horizons.
Okay, so next year they could.
Yes.
Or whatever.
We made that commitment for charter schools as well. The only difference is if they would go from a charter to another charter. So families that left a charter to go to WCA, they would lose their seat.
And, and then my question earlier, I, just how many, how, how, how many really unhappy families do you think are out there? You know, you know, we, we've heard from many. And, but I mean, do you have a feel for that? Is that, is that a huge concern? I mean, I know it's a concern, but is it, you know, when I, when you look at this parent survey, they look pretty happy with lots of things. They're not too sure about achievement, but they're happy with their teachers, they're happy with, you know. Then there are some that are very unhappy and very struggling with kids with needs and having a hard time with virtual. Just, do you have a sense of how widespread that is? Because we hear these things all the time from the messages, but we just don't know.
Yeah, and, and it's very hard to quantify. I have the same data you have, Barry. I have the pulse survey, I have the, the emails and the letters and the calls that you also are receiving. I think, you know, our move to fully virtual plus to start addressing some of those social emotional needs and, and academic needs. I've heard some great success stories with that. And I think that's why we're open to knowing that we need to have this option and to start looking at in-person instruction. Again, the, the work groups model was, let's, is there an interim plan for us to work with our youngest learners and smaller groups to really work on those academics and the social emotional needs in a safe environment to build up everyone's confidence before we would move to the, the original plan, which is fully in-person, five days a week for our K four students.
And finally, the question that was asked by parent, of the parents was, or of the teachers is, if, if a student is just not cooperating with mitigation strategies, is it an involuntary reassignment?
We have.
That, I guess, is the question I think we probably need to be because it potentially is a life and death decision on the part of the student to be on with, with an older adult.
I'd welcome Polly to join me in this because I know she's been doing a lot of work with this, with the school nurses and through the special ed department. But certainly, our school climate department has put together a protocol for mask wearing in particular with multiple steps, and it's a restorative practice, a restorative, you know, to teach, reteach. But there is an endpoint where, yes, if, if there's continued issues, there would be a move to a virtual.
Yeah, I realize it's different with different groups of kids.
There is, there's, there's certainly medical reasons and, and other reasons why, and we would certainly work on that and want to, a student by student situation.
Great, thanks.
Chris.
I think this question is for Nan. I'm wondering if you have a sense of how many families may have chosen to switch to the virtual model based on their thought that on January 19th, individuals or that, that, those who were going back to school would be in the AMPM model. I'm just wondering, because I, I do feel that that's, for families, the more challenging of the, the two that we're considering tonight. And I'm just wondering if you have any idea.
We, when we, when families made that request, we didn't ask for a reason why, but I do have a sense that, yes, in some cases, that was a choice because they didn't feel that they could manage the childcare or other situations related to their personal family situation. So I know there are some, not all, because I do also have, you know, the sense that some families aren't comfortable coming back at this point and are looking at going to a virtual option. But again, that's why we are certainly school of choice, even through the first semester. If families that thought they wanted the virtual option and then with EVS and then felt that, oh, maybe in-person would be a better choice for my child or my family. We were making those moves throughout the first semester and we will continue. The big point with the deadline was simply because we needed to look at staffing.
And I, I think we saw at least one or two letters that suggested that families weren't, were not aware when they switched from the in-person model to virtual that they would be, or vice versa, that they would be switching teachers and students. And I recall seeing that information in the family letters. And I just am wondering if you can share, I, I'm recalling that and I, I'm wondering if you can.
Yeah. Continuity with teachers is always a priority for us, but this is going to be one of those years where we even have some in-person teachers that will be switching to EVS, as Julie talked about, related to different types of leaves, leaves or needs, needs for telework. But yes, because we're moving, we have EVS as a separate school. But our goal always is to try and keep that student moving into a virtual classroom with students from their homeschool. So yes, it may be a different teacher, but it would be with students from their homeschool.
And I recall that being part of the family communication so that when parents were making that decision, they had that information that indeed, if you're switching, it will likely mean a change in the class and/or the teacher.
Right, we have it structured that the, our, our virtual school is, and that was basically put together because of elementary and the developmental piece and, and how we needed to structure our in-person class sizes. Because we were looking to go fully in-person for grades K four. So we looked at reducing those class sizes to no more than 20. And to do that, then we needed to reduce class size, which was through EVS.
Thank you.
Deb.
You're muted.
Thank you. Nan, that was one of my questions about class sizes as well. So when all the extra teachers were, were hired on, that only put class sizes down to 20? In the, in the primary grades? I thought it was going to, I thought we were hiring extra teachers to get the class sizes down to about like 10 or something.
No, it always was targeted at no more than 20. Of course, our HGR classrooms are kept, kept at 18. But also, a lot of the additional teachers that we hired were for EVS because the class size was lowered and those kids needed to have a different teacher.
Okay, okay. Would it, would it seem logical that, going back to the numbers of, of students that transferred? If some went to EVS, they switched from the in-person to EVS and the other one switched from EVS to in-person. To me, that means that people are where they want to be for the most part. And then it is a matter of coming down to choice. You know, what, what choice do we make for those students whose parents really believe they need to be in school? So I, I guess my point in, in saying that is I think people are now where they want to be, which should give us some purely accurate numbers. Um, one more thing. The, this was all sent to staff ahead of time? I feel like we're backing up. I've heard from teachers that some of them have had, they're, that they were, they were told that this would be the model and now all of a sudden we're coming back to us voting on whether this will be the model or not. How did that happen?
Well, I'll, I'll try to explain. So we went through our virtual plus. And you'll recall that as the elementary work group came through, they had a phase one and a phase two, and there was always discussion of how are we going to work with our youngest learners? And so that was the charge, then the next charge of, of the work group. And, and they came around a different, they looked at just K one, two. They, they looked at, well, obviously, you know, the, the different AB, A, AABB, half-day and so on. And, and I think, you know, what happened is they, they very much looked to see what was best instructionally and came around as a team to this. And at some point in time, you know, thought, okay, we're moving beyond that original charge of the K one, two. And we, as a leadership team, talked about it. And we, at that point in time, we needed to take a step back and reflect and say, you know, what we're really doing here is presenting something that was not part of the original framework. Because it went beyond the layering of the plus, the virtual plus, and became its, its own kind of interim hybrid. And so as a leadership team decided that this needed to be something that would be considered, and I came to K with, with this as well. And that is how we, just taking a step back and, and sort of checking to see, okay, was this within that original charge of the virtual plus for the elementary level, which was really looking at the very youngest learners? And all for the, for the right reasons from the work group. You know, they saw this as something that would, would meet those considerations, those high priorities. And, you know, just now taking a step back, I think, and realizing that it's something that, you know, we wanted your input on. Is this, is this interim hybrid something that you would like to add to the framework? And if so, which of those two options do you believe would be, would be best to add in?
Okay, to follow on that, given that it would be an interim hybrid in, but it would apply to K six when the, the hybrid that's already in the approved framework is K four and then five, six. So is it likely that this inner interim hybrid, just the fact that it's interim, would then lead to the previously approved hybrid?
Yes.
Okay, and so the fifth and sixth graders, well, the transition then, it would have, all K six, if, if you would, the option one, which is the motion that we'd be voting on first, AMPM, and maybe for three weeks or so, or minimally three weeks, hopefully, then moving, then you'd see then moving to the next hybrid and then to fully in-person for everyone. I mean, that's the trajectory or that's the plan? Is, am I, am I putting worth? That would be the.
That is, yeah. Nan, if you had any other comments that maybe your work group had talked about?
No, you know, there, we did toss around, you know, when we would be able to bring with our end goal with K four back full time, would it make sense for five and six with all those pros that we talked about to stay in a half-day so that they have more frequent contact with their teachers? But we also recognize with the AABB model, which is an option, that, that would be structured with their secondary siblings, you know. So it really depends on which option we're looking at. We do not want to make multiple shifts for, for our fifth and sixth graders.
The, in, so one of the biggest challenges that I see, and I believe that educationally, the AMPM makes the most, would be the best option for students. And, but I think we are in this realm of just needing to weigh these competing factors. And I think that the, the challenges for families and making it work are, are significant with that. And and if it's an interim, if the AMPM is interim for three weeks, but then you're going to move them to, I mean, there, there just are built in a lot of transitions. So which model, and I've said that earlier in the work session, which model?
Transition, right, the transition would be from, you know, a half-day to a full day.
For, for the fifth and sixth graders, I think, was the point.
Or, well, it'd be transitions for, right. Hybrid for. But then there still is another potential that they would stay AMPM, but then for the younger, the K four, they would switch half-day to full day. And I just, just knowing the families trying to navigate the childcare and the, the changing. So it's something I just wanted to bring up. Gary, your hand had been raised.
Yeah, I just wanted to echo what you're saying, Kay. I think that AMPM is a burden on families, a lot of burden. And it seems to me that the gain of three weeks isn't enough to, you know, see it happen. Again, I, if we're going to go in-person, we had adopted and, you know, proved that model fully in-person back in August. And I just don't see the value of these interim. It's, it almost feels like paralysis by analysis. If we're going to do it, let's do it. I don't know three weeks is going to gain. And I hope, I hope we consider that when we vote in terms of the disruption, not only to the parents, to the teachers, but to the students also, if it's going to be for such a short period of time.
Barry.
And well, and, and my thought on that is, you know, moving from one to the next is not a automatic, I hope. You know, based on our prior discussion, having to do with burden and so on, these are different in levels of of mitigation that is necessary to make it work. And so I, if, are we telling parents that on January 19th, if we do the half-day or the two full days, it means that three weeks later, we're going to be in full? I'm not sure that we can say that, you know, based on our prior discussion about the role of burden in our calculation. If, if cases start to skyrocket again, which is possible after Christmas, depending on how our community operates and so on, all bets may be off in my book. And that's the other half of this equation that we're talking about it. So I think, I think, I don't know if people agree with me on that, but I think that's a topic that needs to be discussed. So, you know, going directly to a full day for up through sixth grade is a big step. Given the, given the guidelines that CDC has promoted and otherwise. Part-time allows you to split your classes and have small groups. And that's a whole different animal in, in COVID world, in my opinion.
And just to clarify, the option three is five days K four?
Yes.
So. Okay, Deb.
And, and just a point of clarification too, it, it did say three weeks of the interim and then hopefully transition in, in a one week's time. That's another month. So bear that into mind. Now we're looking at the middle of February before the K four gets back for full-time instruction.
Um, yeah, in, again, regarding the burden, um, January 19th is four weeks out from today. If, and it was part of intentionally that the, you know, get past the vacation, the winter vacation, how, winter break, excuse me, winter holidays. And, you know, if there would be a uptick in cases, um, there would be time to evaluate that.
I think it's five weeks.
Oh, it's five weeks out from now? Okay.
Look at my calendar.
All right, Christine?
I, I think the original motion was looking at the A M P M model. That, that was a motion to approve that. And while I agree that the daily contact would be, would be excellent and the in-school safety precautions, I think it would be, would likely to be more efficient. I, I'm still just challenged by the families who are going to be, have a burden with trying to, to make this work. And also with all of the changes in terms of, um, you know, if, if a child is not dropped off and picked up by a parent and they have to have a before school and after school care, just the potential for, um, more exposure to spreading the virus. So I'm really, I am really struggling though, because I do think that, and, and I give the, the team that came up with this plan credit for that, because I do think it's the, it's the best academically, but I'm just struggling with the challenge that it presents to families.
So are there any more comments? So right now we have option one, there's a motion and a second. And that would be to add the A M P M interim hybrid model to the safe and resilient framework. I don't see any other hands raised. So Clara, I will ask for roll call.
Your Yankee.
No.
Deb Truman?
No.
Chris Soder?
No.
Barry O'Connor?
Hi.
Jim Bowman?
Hi.
Kay Agar?
No. So then, um, this does not default that option two is approved. Is that correct? We would need?
A motion and a second for option two.
Okay, is there?
That is correct.
Thank you. Okay. So is there a motion to approve option two, which would be the A A B B for K five, K six? No motion? So.
I'll make, I'll make a motion to approve the A A B B K six.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, so discussion of option two. Or we've had a lot of discussion, I guess, already. I don't know if there's anything more specific, anything more that, um, so if this motion would fail, just to clarify, if this motion would fail, then there would be no interim hybrid models incorporated into the framework. And then by default, we would go back to what was originally approved in July. That is, okay, thank you. Deb? Hand us up?
I would just like to make the comment that we've already heard that two days on and five days off is not how students learn best. I don't see it as being much better than what they have right now in virtual. That's my comment.
So I would like to add or ask, um, when the, um, team worked on, um, Nan, I'm sorry, I'm blanking on the name of your work group. If option three would, if, if we would default to option three, then, um, how would, how would we, how would you try to proceed or what would you, is it?
Well, option, option three certainly was what we had planned to come back with in the fall. So we have plans of preparation to do so. Um, we will, uh, you know, certainly work with our principals and staff to ensure the mitigation. It, it just, like I said, would have been with a smaller class size, you gain the opportunity to teach our five and six year olds, seven eights, you know, the mitigation strategies and build up that stamina. Um, we'd be able to address social, emotional and learning needs in a smaller group. But we are prepared to go. And so we will, if, if that is what the board decides, we will make it work. And Steve, from an academic perspective, um, I know we've been already talking about fifth and sixth grade on an A A B B schedule. And we'll support teachers with that as well.
Maybe maybe muted.
Correct, Nan. Just to provide the visual that that goes along with that as a reminder. Um, so again, it would be Monday through Friday, grades five key through four. So that wouldn't be the five full days. And again, um, looking at the reduced class sizes of approximately 20 students. And again, keeping in mind, as Nan indicated, for the grades five and six and those full days of in person. So it would be two consecutive days of in-person instruction with three days of online access. And so, uh, coming back together as a EC six, Safe and Resilient Return Work Group, and looking at, um, how we can really, um, take our resources and apply them to those full days of instruction. You know, how, how are we, again, addressing the unfinished learning that we know that, that many of our students likely have? How can we be very intentional with our in-person time? Um, in particular with mathematics, with reading, with inquiry, social emotional learning, so that we're, we're maximizing that time while we have students in front of us. But again, just wanted to provide a revisit to the visual you saw several hours ago, just to kind of reset that picture in your mind of what this looks like.
Steve, could I ask a question? When, um, so the A A B B, a number of times it's been brought up that then you have five days between, uh, face to face with a, with it, with a teacher. Without spending a lot of time, but was the A B A B considered? Or is there, is it just a obvious that A A is, B B is better educationally?
Well, I think it's, you know, for our conversations tonight, there, there's so many pieces when we say, you know, what's best for our kids overall. Um, you know, one, one of the key things to point out are the interruptions that would take place during the day. When you look at an A B A B versus A A B B. I asked my own boys that very question actually the other night, but understanding they're in high school, things will look a little bit different, you know, from their perception that they liked more of that frequency of, uh, being in school of, of every other day, um, so to speak. But for our younger learners, I think it's important to think of, um, you know, what does that mean as far as consistency for our students and for our families as far, you know, regarding what those days look like? I, I do see that with, when you compare A B A B or A A B B, there's certainly advantages, uh, educationally as far as having, um, teachers two days in a row in person. But at the same time, we also have to think about then those, those three school days consecutively then of, of not. And what, what are the pros and cons? What are the advantages and disadvantages? I, I don't think there's a blanket statement you can necessarily make, um, when you compare one versus the other.
And one thing under the family implications of, of an A B, um, then, you know, the purpose of the A A B B would be to be aligned with the secondary. So for, for childcare, et cetera. And we did talk about that would put them off. So that was part of the discussion as well. If we were A B A B, then we'd be off with the secondary if, because they would be A A B B.
And, and the secondary works best as A A B B? I mean, that's, it looks like it. That's an affirmative. Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Barry?
I had the same question actually. So I, and, and the reason I did is because, uh, uh, my, in Minnesota, that was the model that was used by my son teaching and, and his kids going to school and it worked pretty well. It was, it was district wide though. It was high school and elementary. That was going Monday, Thursday, Tuesday, Friday. But, you know, I, I mean, one of the things is cleaning stuff, having kids there for lunch. There were ways to, doesn't East have a version of this on their video? I saw one of their school introduction video, videos. That was quite entertaining. That kind of laid out how things work in, in that scenario. But I think it might be A A B B that they were portraying, but it'd easily be adapted.
Ben, Ben, did you have any comments regarding the high school schedule and the A A B B choice that we're using?
No, that's what we had talked about, just having kids come two days in a row and then having that Wednesday for cleaning between the groups. In back in September, that's a lot of, that, that conversation helped to drive the A A B B. So you'd have that group of students come on Monday, Tuesday, have Wednesday for a deep clean and, and then have the other group, the other cohort come on Thursday, Friday. So that was part of the conversation at the time as well.
Hi, Gary.
And in the interest of equal time, I want to tell you about a, um, school district in Wisconsin, less than an hour from Appleton, that was fully in person, grades three through five since September. Uh, the kids eat at lunch in their classroom. They stay with their class at recess. Recess schedule changed, so they could have more recesses with less groups outside. Uh, the kids come at stagger times, uh, starting around seven forty-five. They get done at two thirty-two. So a day is usually like eight oh two to three ten or to two thirty-two. Uh, COVID relief for 2021 in terms of instruction minutes has kicked in because they did, you know, decrease the length of the day. And it's my understanding that, um, from an instructional standpoint, um, and Judy or Nan, you can correct me on that, but there's some relief in that aspect, I believe.
Yes.
Um, kids also have two Fridays off a month and then teachers plan on those days. Uh, the class sizes are approximately 20 students, uh, 18 are in person about right now and for our virtual. And, uh, since September, uh, there has been some quarantine, as you might expect. And it's happened one time for one class and twice for another and a few times for another. Um, and admittedly, it's hard, no matter what model we're in, right? But it's hard to go back and forth. But at the same time, the point is they made this work. And I think, um, like we keep saying, who knows what's January 19th is going to bring. But, uh, this group here, as Nan just said, was ready for A M P M, A A B B, or also, also fully in person. And I just wanted to share that, uh, information, like I said, in the best interest of equal time.
Okay, any other hands raised? As we have option two on the table. Oh, Chris, sorry. I'll let you speak.
Thank you. I, I'm still being challenged by moving from where we are today to, uh, fully in person with K four. And then the five, six going, um, the A A B B model. I think it's a big jump for the size of our district not to have some sort of an interim plan.
And I, and I would just add the, the, my discussion on the, on the burden. Uh, it changes in nature when you go from that many kids in a building. You know, earlier in the year, we were talking about having trouble fitting, you know, 800 kids at Huntley or whatever it is. And now we're back to that. And the mitigation changes. But, uh, but it's also, uh, you know, when the longer you're in school, the more the burden becomes an issue according, according to almost all the guidelines. So we need, that's a discussion that I'm concerned about. As we talk about, you know, these, these topics, two months before a vaccine is probably going to make a few of these things much less of a challenge. Three months maybe. One can hold.
Uh, Jim?
With the, um, option two, um, A A B B, the, um, class sizes are smaller. I, I think that's important. Um, I, I, I do agree with the transition back is, is more gradual. But I also think with fewer kids, um, the kids are distanced more. So the, the virus finds it a little more difficult to operate on us and that, that's, that's good for the health of the kids as well as the staffs. So I see, I see benefit to option two.
By the way, by the way, the kid, the kids in Minnesota went from A B A B back to fully virtual recently because of numbers in the community. You know, so it's, it can go both ways. And that's, I think that's the nature of it. I, that's my belief. And that's the belief of many of the people that are epidemiologists and involved in this.
I, I, I think he called on me. I think I agree, Barry. It can go both ways, but we, we haven't gone either way yet. We've been virtual. Um, with regards to students easing into this, we don't ease students into school in the beginning of the year. They, they, they go to school full day, kindergartners, they go to school full day in the beginning of the year. I, to me, that doesn't seem, um, a real strong reasoning. Um, I, I just, I think it would be more disruptive than anything. And, um, we need to just do something positive, like make a move in the right direction.
Jim, your hand is still up. Do you have any, did, is it up again? Jim?
Oh, no, no, it is not.
Okay. All right. Any other comments? Chris? I think you're muted.
Just to clarify, um, if we, if we approve option two, then my understanding is that it would be added to the framework. Um, and so there would be this option two along with the plan to get K through four fully in person. So that the decision as to which model is going to be implemented will then rest with district leadership. Is that accurate?
I think I'm going to ask for clarification. I understood um, that it would be board approval to add either option one or option two to the Safe and Resilient Return Framework for elementary five K six students for implementation for the start of the second semester. While maintaining administrative discretion for future transitions. So second semester, January 19th, barring any, um, exploding cases or something, would start if option two were approved. Be option two. So basically, the whole district would be on A A B B.
Except for early childhood.
Oh, thank you. What would, what is early childhood?
They would follow their normal half day, uh, in person.
Oh.
Is there, their half day programs?
That's, that's our three, that's our. That's, that's our three, that's our three-year-olds and...
Four-year-olds.
Yeah, four-year-olds.
So if we approve option two, then that is the default for January 19th. Assuming that that we're making a model change at that time.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
What would... But then at some point, what I'd asked earlier, the assumption is that then K4 would move to fully in-person, and then 512 would stay, because then basically, we're getting to the other hybrid. And we don't know what would trigger that. I mean, it'd be a, a three-week evaluation of how things are going, or back to, back to...
We'd be looking at all the same criteria that we're talking about at each board meeting.
And, and... All right, Deb?
Yes, and then just, just one, one point to add into that. The board may be making changes to the decision-making criteria, because that's our, that's our prerogative, and I'm hoping that's on either a special meeting or in a January 11th meeting agenda. So you know, if, if, yeah, but that's an option too. That's an option as well, that we make the criteria and students go back or not, anyway. And, and even with this, Chris, January 19th is not set in stone. And Barry, it's not set in stone. It's five weeks away. So I just think that month, again, that extra month, that students are not, the young students that are not in school full-time, we're going to end up paying the price for this. Health is not determined by a negative COVID test.
Judy, did you want to comment?
I just wondered if, if Kay, if you could read the recommendation line again. I think just that provides clarity for everyone.
Okay, sure. So administrator recommendation is board approval to add either option one or option two to the Safe and Resilient Return Framework for Elementary 5K to 6 students for implementation for the start of the second semester, while maintaining administrative discretion for future transitions.
Thank you.
And so option two, yeah, so... Okay, are there any other comments? Otherwise, we have option two, a motion and a second to consider option two. I don't see any hands. Clara?
I move approval of option two.
Oh, I... Do we already have a motion?
We have a motion and a second.
I thought we did, yeah.
Yes, we do. So I think we'll ask, I'll ask for a roll call vote.
Deb Truman?
No.
Chris Sauter?
Yes.
Barry O'Connor?
Aye.
Jim Bowman?
Aye.
Kay Egger?
No.
Gary Yonki?
No.
That is a tie vote. In the event of a tie vote, the motion does fail.
So then it would be option three.
The original.
The original. Okay, so lengthy, lengthy consideration and a lot of work. Lot, a lot of work going into all of this, so, um... Thank you for, for all of that. All that work. So we can move on now to School Services, Student Services, Action Items.
So this is Greg Archis. I oversee the calendar committee for the district, so I am speaking about item 6A, our 2021, 2022 school year calendar. So the calendar is somewhat unique in that September 1st falls on a Wednesday, so our first day of school needs to be a Wednesday. And the calendar committee is recommending that we have one staff orientation day on September 30th, so that would be the first week of school. The other two orientation days being held the week before. Usually, we start on a Monday or a Tuesday, so we have all three days of orientation the week before. Doesn't work out in the calendar this way. Also, the calendar includes six additional late start days. And the addition of these days was based on recommendations from several district committees, and shows a continued commitment by our district to professional development. And I recommend approval of this item 6A.
I'll move approval of item 6A.
I'll second.
Any discussion of that item?
Hey, I had a quick question. So we're approving the school calendar for next year, right, 2021 to 2022, is that right, Greg?
That's correct.
Is there any chance with COVID-19 and the gap and the slide and all those things we hear about, that they could start school earlier? In August, you know, maybe a week earlier, week two, would this vote have anything to do with that? I mean, in the future, I would guess we'd have a chance to amend that, but is there a chance that the Department of Instruction, you know, could think about doing something like that?
We're currently not allowed to start the school year prior to September 1st. And so it would have to be something legislative that would allow us to do that. And so we have to fit our calendar in between September 1st and whichever point we want to end at the end of the school year. But as of right now, we still have to start September 1st or later.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, roll call, please, Clara.
Deb Truman?
Aye.
Chris Sauter?
Aye.
Barry O'Connor?
Aye.
Jim Bowman?
Aye.
Kay Egger?
Aye.
Gary Yonki?
Aye.
Okay, then we're on to Business Services, Action Items.
Business Services presents two items for your consideration. The first item is the check register for November, and the second item consists of two grants to the district, and I recommend approval of these items, 7A and B.
Move approval of 7A and B.
I'll second that.
Any question on those items?
I know you're not going to like this, but I do have a question. Greg, the, one of the grants was a PE kit.
Correct.
Can you give the listeners and the board an idea of how FIED works right now, today, when it's virtual?
I can tell you how the finance works of the virtual FIED right now. That's what these grants are pertaining to. I will have to lean on probably Steve Harrison, maybe, to talk about FIED.
Yeah, so Mickey Duran took the initiative for applying for a grant in order to receive additional PE equipment for students, knowing that one of the struggles has been in a virtual setting, how do we ensure that our students, especially our younger learners, have access universally to the same equipment? And so through the grant, provided opportunities for PE kits that would include things such as jump ropes and balls and things that could not only be used in a virtual setting, but then brought back in, whether it's a hybrid or fully in-person setting as well, which would also help with avoiding cross-contamination, sharing of equipment, and so on. So, you know, really to, to commend Mickey for taking that, that initiative and getting the additional supplies for PE.
Nice, very timely. Yeah, thanks for that understanding. That's cool.
And from two Appleton West teachers that are retired, I think, actually.
Yeah, correct. The first gift was from Mary Beth Neenhouse, and the second one from the Apples.
Very nice.
Really, really nice.
Okay, anything else? Okay, roll call, please. Clara?
Chris Sauter?
Aye.
Barry O'Connor?
Aye.
Jim Bowman?
Aye.
Kay Egger?
Aye.
Gary Yonki?
Aye.
Deb Truman?
Aye.
Okay, and then we're on to Personnel Services, Action Items.
Yes, Personnel Services has two items to present for the board's consideration. Items 8A and B, which consist of seven new educator hires and one contract change. I would recommend approval of items 8A and B.
I move to approve.
I'll second.
Okay, any question or discussion of those items? Okay, roll call, please, Clara.
Barry O'Connor?
Aye.
Jim Bowman?
Aye.
Kay Egger?
Aye.
Gary Yonki?
Aye.
Deb Truman?
Aye.
Chris Sauter?
Aye.
Okay, it takes us to the end of our business. Future meetings are listed, and just to point out that programs and services for this Thursday is actually canceled. That came through on an email, but it's not, wasn't updated on board docs, so Business Services tomorrow morning, 7:30, and then other meetings are listed, so...
Kay, quick question. How, um, how do you get an item of information on, I, I, or I, I guess what I would like to know is, when will we talk about going to, going off of virtual meetings into in-person meeting?
I, I think that should be an agenda topic.
Okay, okay, thank you.
I think we can bring that, uh, bring that forward.
Okay.
And then, so with that, I would like a motion to go into state statute, per Wisconsin State Statute 19.851C, Superintendent's Formative Evaluation Conference.
So moved.
I'll second.
Okay, I guess we have to do a roll call. Roll call.
Jim Bowman?
Aye.
Kay Egger?
Aye.
Gary Yonki?
Aye.
Deb Truman? Chris Sauter?
Aye.
Barry O'Connor?
Aye.
Okay, so thank you all. Now, we will actually leave this meeting, and we have, as we'll be in closed session, we have a new link, so thank you all for joining us tonight, and have a good night.